Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting of Thursday, January 23rd, 2025. Public participation to this meeting is provided in person and remotely via Zoom in accordance with Mass General Law. The Zoom link can be found on the city website. This meeting is also being televised and recorded by PBD TV in the city council's stenographer. Please join me for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. You are the motion for the approval of the minutes. Any discussion? Seeing none? We, I think we're taking a roll call vote tonight.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamash.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes, motion carries 11 to zero. Thank you, Madam Clerk. If there are no objections, I'd like to ask the mayor to come up just to take one appointment out of order for someone that's been here for a couple of hours. Any objections, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening to you. Good evening, counselors. I hope everybody's doing well. Glad to be with you tonight. You have my annual appointments that I typically try to get to all of you in January. Most of those, I think all but one, are reappointments, people that all of you are very familiar with. But there is one today that is a new appointment that I wanted to bring forward. She's here tonight, Sheila Dambrosio. Many of you know Sheila. Sheila has been no stranger to the city of Peabody. She's been a great advocate for our city and has been involved in a number of causes and programs in our community at the Brown School, Green Peabody, St. Anne's, Peabody Historical Society. She's always somebody that helps with our community and lends a helping hand. We have an opening on the Peabody Historical Commission, a board that's been doing some really great work that I think all of you are familiar with. And I wanted to bring forward Sheila's name as a new member. She would first start out as an alternate member, but I think she'd be a great addition. Already knows a great deal of the history of our city and in our area, and I think somebody will be able to jump right in and contribute right away. And Sheila's here today, and I wanted to ask maybe Madam President if you could bring her forward, but I think she'd be an excellent addition to an already excellent board.
Thank you, Mayor. Sheila, you're welcome to come up. Don't feel obligated to. That's totally up to you.
No, make her come up.
Oh, boy. Well, I think we all know you, but come on up if you want to just state your name and say hello.
I'm Sheila Dambrosio, and I am so happy to finally be on this commission. I've been on the Board of the Historical Society for many years, so I've heard a lot of the different scoops and all the information and the programs they've been involved in. So thank you all very, very much, and have a wonderful evening. Stay warm.
Thank you so much. Any discussion on this? Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to approve the mayor's appointment of Sheila Dambrosio, South 7 Clinton Road, Peabody, Mass. 01960, to the Historical Commission as an alternate for a one-year term commencing on 12/31/2020, or until 2021/31/25. Thank you.
Thank you. And in addition to that, can I ask you to receive that item out of 7C?
Move to receive item 7C.
That piece. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamash.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to zero.
Congratulations. And now we're going to move on. And the second motion to approve, roll call vote again. Please. Oh, we're going to do the rest of the appointments after the hearings, if that's okay with everyone. I think we have a lot of people here. We want to move along. Is that okay? All right. We're moving along to hearings for A. If the clerk wants to read the notice, please.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Peabody will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, January 23rd, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Gellwigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., and remotely via Zoom on petition 1A 7R1YY submitted by Verizon, 125 Lundquist Drive, Braintree, Mass., requesting to install one joint-owned utility pole, P dot 16X dot 25 on the westerly side of Allen's Lane, at a point approximately 47 feet northwesterly from existing pole, P dot 16X, and one joint-owned pole, utility pole number P dot 16X dot 5 on the westerly side of Allen's Lane, at a point approximately 80 feet northwesterly from existing pole, P dot 16X. For remote participation using the Zoom platform, please visit www.pbd-ma.gov under Calendar on the homepage, or contact the City Clerk's Office, PBD City Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The petitioner is at the podium. Could you please give us your name, address for the record, and give us a brief overview of what you're looking to do?
Yes. Good evening, honorable members of the city council. My name is Alexander Leslie Marrero, M-A-R-R-E-R-O. I'm resident on Centene Cross Street, Marlborough, Massachusetts. I'm an employee at Pike, P-I-K-E, Telecom and Renewables LLC, and authorized contractor for Verizon New England Incorporated. I've been asked by Verizon to speak on their behalf of the petition in front of you this evening and answer any questions that either you or members of the public might have about the petition. As explained by your clerk, Verizon is petitioning to place two joint-owned poles to be numbered 16X point 25 and 16X point 5 on the western side of Allen's Lane. First pole would be placed in front of the Peabody Police Station, and the second pole will be placed between the driveway to the police station and the middle school driveway. Both poles to be placed would be a 40-foot Class II standard wood utility poles, and they'll be joint-owned between Verizon and Peabody Electric, Peabody Municipal Light Plant. Do the councils have any questions?
Thank you, sir. First, we're going to open it up to the public if there's anyone that would like to speak in favor of these two poles. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to any counselors with questions. Seeing none. I will just say I, this is right on the border of Ward 4 and Ward 2, and I did speak with Hussein from PMLP, and essentially, these two poles, thank you for your technical explanation. These two poles are going in front of the existing police station as a redundancy and a backup for power for the new police station where everything will be underground. So I certainly think this is a necessity and very proactive. I have no objection. If anyone else does, I'm going to turn it over to Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to close the public hearing.
You heard the motion? Roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamash.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to zero.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to approve the petition 1A 7R1YY submitted by Verizon, 125 Lundquist Drive, Braintree, Mass., requesting to install one joint-owned utility pole, number P point 16X point 25 on the westerly side of Allen's Lane, at a point approximately 47 feet northwesterly from the existing pole, P point 16X, and one joint-owned utility pole, number P point 16X point 5 on the westerly side of Allen's Lane, at a point approximately 80 feet northwesterly from existing pole, P point 16X. So moved.
You heard the motion? Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamash.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to zero.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your patience. And now we are going to move on to item 4B, special permit hearing. If the clerk wouldn't mind reading the hearing notice.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Peabody, acting as the special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, January 23rd, 2024, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Gellwigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., and remotely via Zoom on the application from J.D. Raymond Transport, Inc., PO Box 48 Dover Foxcraft, Maine, for a special permit to allow the use of a mulching slash composting operation and/or outdoor storage. In parentheses, a pre-existing non-conforming use, end parentheses, at 25 Farm Avenue, Peabody, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 1.6, 4.2.2, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. For remote participation using the Zoom platform, please visit www.pbd-ma.gov under City Calendar on the homepage, or contact the City Clerk's Office. PBD City Council, Councilor Julie K. Daigle, City Council President.
Madam President?
Counselor Gamash?
If I may, under suspension of the rules, receive late 1, late 2, late 3, and late 4, as well as on our package, items 8D, 8E, and 8F. So moved.
You heard the motion? Any discussion on receiving all of those?
Yes.
Can we roll call all that together? Roll call vote.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Manning.
I have an objection to receiving late 4.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm going to take a vote on 1, 2, and 3. Roll call. And D, E, and F. Roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamash.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to zero.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Gamash, for receiving all of those. And now I'm going to open it up to the petitioner. Please state your welcome. Please state your name and address for the record and present your petition.
Good evening, counselors. Thank you for having us. My name is Kim Crowe. I'm an attorney with Baker-Braverman-Barbadooro. Our office is in Quincy. I have with me, sitting back there, is Will Boyle, Mike Worf, both representatives of J.D. Raymond Transport, Inc. And then, in somewhat of a funny coincidence, considering the appointment earlier, we have our engineer, Steve D. Ambrosio, with the same last name. He's an engineer with GZA if there's any questions on the plan. We're here tonight for J.D. Raymond. We filed a special permit application back in November under Section 4.2.2 of the Use Table of the Peabody Zoning Ordinance. We're seeking a special permit for mulching, composting operation, and/or outdoor storage. Basically, we're seeking a special permit to continue the J.D. Raymond use that's been at 25 Farm Ave. for approximately 20 years at this point. There was a notation on the application in question 6 where we filed what we're asking for. In that notation, I mentioned that we have argued and made some exceptions before in an ongoing court situation with a neighboring property owner. And we've put forth exceptions to the zoning ordinance for lawful non-conforming use and horticultural agricultural use. I just want to make sure that the council is aware that we are here for the special permit under the Use Table. I did want to point that out because the litigation is ongoing. It commenced with a zoning enforcement request by the neighbor, went through land court, and is now in the appeals court. And that's the reason why. The notation is in that question 6, but we are before you, seeking a special permit under the Use Table, and specifically the mulch use that was put in there in 2013. Our application has the owner's support. They've been our landlord for 20 years. We have members of the Papa Nicholas family sitting with us over there as well. J.D. Raymond has been on the site, like I said, a long time. They've provided a number of city benefits to Peabody. There was Ella's Playground in 2017 they gave mulch to. One of the more important contributions that they make is that every year for all of these years, they take in city clean waste, so landscape waste, different things. The city brings them to their site, and J.D. Raymond recycles the product into mulch. And the mulch is put out at businesses in Peabody and beyond, at residences really all over. The 20 years has been a cooperative relationship, but it hasn't been without incident. There were fires in 2010 and 2012. There was an opposition filed by the neighbor. It makes a lot of talk about those fires. After 2012, there was an article in Salem News, and it was dated February 9th, 2012. And in that article, Mayor Benin Court is quoted as saying that the 2012 fire, and this is where it starts, warranted a cease and desist order until I can get a handle on the situation. And the article describes an upcoming meeting with J.D. Raymond to discuss the long-term plan. I do have copies of the article with me. I haven't submitted it. I can go through that process if anybody wants to see it. But I wanted to mention that because the fire bills that were brought up from 13, 15 years ago, nothing more happened out of it. And so at that meeting, John Raymond has described what happened as saying that the mayor essentially said, "We like having you in the city. Keep coming here. Don't worry about the fire bill." And if you don't believe that that's recollection, we're talking about 13 years ago. There was no action by the city whatsoever to collect that bill after that 2012 meeting, and there was never any action taken to do anything to J.D. Raymond's business until we move forward into the more recent years when the neighbor, run by a company, run by Michael Weiss, who's over here with his team, and they started taking a lot of actions to shut down the business, which has brought us to where we are here today. The council received 148 pages of opposition from Mr. Weiss's attorney. And so I just want to describe a little bit of the background between these two property owners. Mr. Weiss purchased 27 Rear Farm Avenue in 2014. That's a triangular-shaped property that's sort of sandwiched between J.D. Raymond's operation and I-95. Prior to purchasing that property, he had been operating his own mulch and landscape business on a portion of 25 Farm Ave. for approximately 20 years. Never during that time did he get a special permit. But he purchased the property, he moved his landscape and mulch operation over there, and the law of non-conforming use says that you can't move a non-conforming use. If you move it, if you find a new location, it loses any non-conformity it had at that point. But in 2017, he came before the council, he filed an application for a special permit, and he received it. He received a special permit for mulching and composting operation for outdoor storage and for office and shop for Contractor's Yard with outdoor storage of vehicles and materials. There were no conditions whatsoever on that permit. The council found then, as we're asking it to find now, that the use was in harmony with the neighborhood, which is industrial, and that it met the different characteristics of a special permit, which is what this council looks at. And I'll go into that a little bit further, but just for a little more background of how we specifically got to the 148 pages of opposition. So in March of 2021, Mr. Weiss and his companies received a comprehensive permit authorizing construction of 116 apartment units on that same triangular site that was right in between the J.D. Raymond operation, that he was obviously well aware of, and I-95. Residential is prohibited in the DDD zone that the properties are in. His application didn't have any onsite buffering from J.D. Raymond's use, from I-95, from anything else. And after he got that comprehensive permit, he started taking different actions to shut down J.D. Raymond, for a summarized way of saying it. And specifically, in March or April of 2022, he filed a lawsuit against the building a lawsuit against the building commissioner, demanding that the building commissioner take action against J.D. Raymond, which is what led to the Land Court action that I described earlier. I just want to point out, the law of comprehensive permits, the regulations that are statewide, say that a permit holder is supposed to start construction within three years. We're coming up on four years now. There was an eight-month, Mr. Weiss received a building permit in March of 2022. There was an 18-month suspension because they hadn't received their Conservation Commission approval for the apartments. And during that process, their engineers did file a notice of intent, seeking approval through Conservation. They actually filed it in August, when Conservation Commission was on recess. And because the wetlands regulations require that a hearing be opened in 21 days, and there was no August meeting, they were able to bypass local review altogether. And they zoomed up to the state. The state had some questions, did issue their approval. J.D. Raymond didn't appeal or anything else. But they're now on their third extension of the building permit. And I point that out just to say that comprehensive permits are given for a lot of reasons. But one of the reasons that towns and cities like them is because they add units to the subsidized housing index. Because it's been so long since the comprehensive permit was issued, since the building permits were issued, the units don't count as affordable housing in Peabody right now. And they won't count unless he actually starts construction and a certificate of occupancy issues. And so for now, and the foreseeable future, the neighborhood remains industrial, just as it was intended to be in the master plan, which shows this triangular area between Farm Ave. and I-95 as industrial, which is what J.D. Raymond has been doing, which is what the abutting uses, the landfill, the DPW, the different operations that take place in that area. That's what they do, and that's what J.D. Raymond has done. So I mentioned earlier, the no-cost, clean waste disposal, that's a monetary benefit to the City of Peabody, about $30,000 to $50,000 a year if the city had to take that waste to another facility. And it gets recycled for use in the different areas. Mulch uses like J.D. Raymond and Mr. Weiss's have been governed by the state fire code for about the past 13 years or so. J.D. Raymond complies with the state law. The state law says that the piles need to be less than 60 feet. There needs to be adequate spacing for the fire department. And they meet all of those requirements. The fire department had no objection to this application. They are asking for one more hydrant, which we don't have an issue with. We've been talking about it for a little while, and part of it is finding an appropriate location. J.D. Raymond is attempting to upgrade the site. There's been delays caused by all the appeals that are going on. But the Conservation Commission did issue an order of conditions approving the proposed upgrades. Those include two infiltration basins, a sediment forbey, a hydrodynamic separator of the fence. You can see the fence is up there now if you go by the property. And one fire hydrant. And it also includes a vegetated buffer, which includes 35 blue spruce trees to be put up between J.D. Raymond and the abutting property owner. But the work can't begin at 25 Farm Ave. until the appeals are over. In fact, J.D. Raymond went ahead and installed the one hydrant that's there and the fence for fire safety. And Attorney Panos, when arguing to Conservation Commission and DEP that we shouldn't have done that because the permit was still on appeal, which was true, and DEP issued an order. And then, when they appealed, the approval that Conservation Commission had given us to the Mass DEP, DEP said, "Okay, we agree. This proposal meets the state wetlands guidelines, and we're okay with the hydrant and the fence that went in." So I just wanted to clarify that part also. So despite Attorney Panos's letter and the opposition that says that J.D. Raymond shouldn't be issued a special permit because of the impacts that they claim are occurring on the wetlands and Mr. Weiss's property, they can't have it both ways. They can't argue that J.D. Raymond isn't doing enough, and at the same time, be the reason that they can't do anything to upgrade the property. So we're asking the council to disregard the static that's been raised by the neighbor. It's a computing company. They've been sitting on their apartment permit for four years. It's an industrial area. And we're asking specifically for the council to vote in favor of a special permit to allow J.D. Raymond to continue its longstanding mulch operation and its relationship with the city, because J.D. Raymond's use satisfies the conditions. It serves a local need. The design appearance is not injurious to the neighborhood now, and it will certainly be enhanced when the upgrades are allowed to go in. And the use is in harmony with the zoning ordinance, which considers this section of Peabody commercial and industrial. I'm here for any questions. The representatives of J.D. Raymond, our engineer, or any of us are here for any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Attorney Crowa. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Please state your name and address for the record. And if you have something to present, you can ask if we wanted to receive that, a letter.
Jonathan Wood, Sr., Wood Trucking Corporation, Peabody, Mass, Abutting Properties. We've had our business there for almost 40 years. And we'd like to just add some late insight.
Motion received.
From another citizen in Peabody.
Motion received late 5. Any discussion? Roll call vote. What's late? I'm sorry. What is late 5?
Excuse me. So I'll read late 5, if you don't mind, Mr. Wood.
Thank you.
So late 5 is a letter of support from Jason and Julie Dupont, Peabody residents. It says, "To whom it may concern, we are writing today on behalf of John Raymond of J.D. Raymond Transport, 25 Farm Ave.." Mr. Raymond is an upstanding member of the Peabody community, as demonstrated to us back in 2014. We made a generous donation to our family due to our son's medical condition at the time. Mr. Raymond unselfishly donated to us without even knowing our family on a personal level. This kind of compassion during a family's most difficult time was, without a doubt, truly kind to me. The City of Peabody should be proud to have a gentleman like this representing their great community. Sincerely, Jason and Julie Dupont.
Thank you, Counselor Turco. Thank you, Mr. Woods. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this? Oh, there's a motion. I'm sorry. Roll call vote. Any objection to receive this late communication? We have one counselor that's remote, but Counselor Turco read it. So can we have a roll call on receiving that?
Counselor Turco.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozigdal.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you. Welcome to the podium. If you want to state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. I'm Crystal Papa Nicholas. I'm here as the landlord of 25 Farm Ave. On behalf of my family, John Raymond has been an exceptional tenant for the last 20 years. He has looked out after my family. And I, this whole issue between the two neighbors has just been very trying on my elderly members of my family. So for that reason, my brother and I are here with our other tenants supporting this whole permit application. I'd like to make one point, is that if Mr. Weiss is at all stating in his paperwork, which I have not read, but if he is at all stating that Mr. Raymond's operation that has been there for decades is a nuisance to him or any hindrance of him building his apartment building, he came to that nuisance. Mr. Raymond was there long before Mr. Weiss bought the property. And as the mayor clearly said in the issue before this evening, when you buy a piece of property, you have due diligence to do. And Mr. Weiss clearly did not do his due diligence. So for that, I'm gonna leave it at that and hope you approve the permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to Welcome, Mr. Woods. I think you're here for the in favor part. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm Robert John Wood. I live at 278 Forest Street, Peabody, Mass. I've been in the city for 75 years. And I'm in favor of this thing for J.D. Raymond. I work Ford Trucks Farm. I've been working for them since they came to Peabody. I have four people that live in our community that drive for them and depend on a week's pay. Plus, there's three other truck owners that live in Peabody, on Bartholomew Street and other various streets in the city that depend on John Raymond for a paycheck to keep their trucks running and pay their taxes in the City of Peabody. John Raymond came to this city, and he had problems. Donates any time that someone comes to him for Bach mulch to playgrounds at the South School, Peabody High School, Burke School. And he's very generous, and we had big fundraisers for that person that had the problem with his son's eyes. He stepped right up to the plate and paid one big treatment for that young boy to have his eyesight. So I'd say he's a good member of the community, and I'd like to see this go forward, because we need him. We have a spot for the city to dump their logs, chips, and brush. It's very important to have him, or we're gonna end up paying to go further away with it, and costs will go up for the DPW. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Please come up. Hi, sir. Please state your name and address for the record and clarify if you're in favor or opposition.
Okay, my name is Mike Diorcy, 16 Valley Circle, Peabody, Mass. I'm in favor of Mike Weiss, and I'm the owner of Diorcy's Bakery. I mean, I gotta say that Mike's been a close friend of mine. And I understand Bobby, too. I mean, they're close friends of mine, too. And I get the whole process. And I understand it. I think he's just asking for a little bit of consideration on the half of J.D. Raymond, basically. So I'm here for him, and I understand the other people are just a great people, too. I don't think anybody's weren't talking about their personality, or what they do for the city, and this, that, and the other thing. I think it's just a matter of being respectful for neighbors to neighbor. That's all. That's all I have to say, really, basically. Counselor's gonna vote on it. Probably already made up your mind. I have no idea, but usually that's how it all works. So anyways, have a good night, everybody. And enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diorcy. And no, I think I can speak for everyone. No one's mind has been made up. So I'm gonna do one last shout-out for anyone that wants to speak in favor. Please come up, sir. I'm gonna ask you to state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Dogan, 18 Rutledge Road, Peabody, Mass. I am here in favor of J.D. J.D. Raymond has been a customer of mine's for over 20 years. They run a great operation there. Also, I'm in behalf of Ella's Army. In 2017, when we were building the playground, we were $25,000 short to get mulch for the playground. And I went to J.D. Raymond, and do you do playground mulch? And since we built the South School playground for Ella, J.D. Raymond has been a great supporter of Ella's Army. And I hope the board goes in favor and grants their permit tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Last call for anyone else that would like to speak in favor. Seeing none, anyone that would like to speak in opposition, please come up. Attorney Panos.
Thank you, Madam President. For the record, my name is Jason Panos, practicing law at 246 Andover Street, Peabody, Massachusetts. I'm joined by Mr. Michael Weiss, who is the manager of the residences at Farm Ave., the owner of the adjacent property at 27R Farm Ave. Before I begin, I really would like to commend and thank you, the council, for undertaking this very careful deliberation. I know it's not in your job description to have to review 400-plus pages of documents supporting a special permit application. And I feel your pain. But here we are, and I'm not happy to be here and would prefer like you not to be here in opposition of a special permit. I usually like to advocate for things. But we're here to stick to the facts and not go down rabbit holes. And if we can assist the council with context and facts and information, that's what we're here to do. Just a little background of who we are. As I indicated, the residences at Farm Avenue owns the adjacent 27R Farm Avenue site. They are the holder of a comprehensive permit, expiring in January 2028. And that comprehensive permit was supported by the city and the mayor. The development allows for the construction of 116 units of housing, which will house 200-plus people. I want to be very clear about this. It creates a lawfully existing residential use adjacent to the subject property today. The use is allowed. I know that Attorney Crowha indicated that, "No, it's not a residential use until you build it." No, that's not true. It's allowed today. It exists today for the purposes of our analysis. And to clear up any misconception, I know there have been a lot of rumors swirling around. We intend to start construction on this development in the summer of 2025, this year. At the end of the day, we are seeking to eliminate the harmful impacts of the J.D. Raymond use on that lawfully existing residential use and the 200-plus future families or people who will live there. The thing that perplexes me, and even more so as we sit here today, having listened to this presentation on an application where 75% to 80% of it was focused on Mr. Weiss and not the merits of our own application, or the J.D. Raymond application. It's a kind of confusing strategy to me, but it is what it is. I am further perplexed, because I think I can answer this question. Why this application now? Why are they here before you now, having been conducting their uses, as it was referenced, for almost 20 years? Why now? It's been illegal, by the way, since they started. The answer to that question is they're not here out of the goodness of their heart. They're here because a judge told them to be here. J.D. Raymond appealed decisions by the ZBA and the Building Commissioner to cease and desist that illegal activity after the ZBA heard the matter for a year and a half. And I saw in your packet you got a letter from Fran Glougi, the ZBA chair. It seems to me she wrote that letter. She referenced those cease-and-desist letters, and she referenced the 40B. She's been in the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's been an integral part of this whole saga for a long time. And during that time, during that one and a half years while they were fighting with the Zoning Board of Appeals on zoning compliance, they could have applied to the Conservation Commission. They could have applied to you, the city council, for a special permit. But instead, they fought tooth and nail to avoid doing these things, dragging their feet, leaving no alternative for the ZBA and the Building Commissioner to act, and they did. Again, they're here because of the resulting action that the ZBA and the Building Commissioner took, which they appealed to the land court. And they're here as a result of that land court decision, which told them they had to be here. So in September 2024, Land Court Judge Foster ordered compliance with the zoning ordinance to obtain a special permit on the following basis. He first upheld both cease-and-desist orders by the Building Commissioner and the Zoning Board of Appeals. And one thing that, again, boggled my mind in light of that decision, and I heard it again, and it was offered in your papers that were submitted to support this application, that you could support this application because they've been there for 20 years, and it's a pre-existing legal, non-conforming use. It is not. A judge told us it is not, and they are appealing that decision. But there's a snowball's chance in hell they'll win that appeal. They are not a legal, legally existing, non-conforming use. Their use is illegal as we stand today. They also ruled, he also ruled, that J.D. Raymond is not a horticultural use. He also ruled that they don't manufacture the products that are contemplated under the zoning ordinance. But back up, prior to that, because there was a lot missing in Attorney Crowha's little synopsis of timeline. Back around 2018, I want to say, well before we even contemplated a housing development back there, before we were even considering a 40B, we met with Attorney Jack Kelty, who was then representing J.D. Raymond. We met with John Raymond, an associate of his, his then environmental consultant. We met with our engineer, was present Peter Ogrin at Hays, and Mr. Weiss, to determine ways in which we could kind of coexist. Throughout that process and some interim discussions, there was really no willingness from J.D. Raymond to work with us, even though they were informed at the time that their uses were unlawful. We extended our hand as late as last fall to work out a solution. As we were going through the DEP adjudicatory process where we are right now, they slapped it back. They want to hear nothing of it. The only thing they want to do is do as they please without condition, restriction, rules, regulations. And they can't be trusted to self-regulate and act in the best interests of the neighborhood or the city when they have a track record of doing the opposite. I did give you significant material in support of our position. Part of that was kind of synthesized in a PowerPoint, which I wanted to present tonight, but was not accepted. So I understand, in the interest of time, I'd just like to go through a few important key points in addition to that context and history. But I just want to be clear. We have attempted, on several occasions, to reach out to them to come up with a solution. And they just want to continue business as usual. So I obviously told you about what we have at 27R Farm Avenue. That decision was due to sunset next January. Through the Permit Extension Act, we get another two years, so January 2028. An unbuilt project, an unbuilt development, has already benefited the city. We've spent in excess of $250,000 in mitigation to protect wetland and resource area. We've spent $40,000 engaging in peer review. We paid $436,000 for a building permit. We've contributed $25,000 to the Peabody Sidewalk Fund Improvement Fund. We've paid $36,000 to the Peabody Municipal Light Plant for a total of about $788,000 for a project, a development that has not even been constructed yet. Think of the tax revenue the city is going to make, that this development is going to generate. We heard a lot of things about the good things J.D. Raymond does. And I'm here to tell you that there's a lot of stuff they don't do. There's a lot of benefit that they withhold from the city. They don't employ any Peabody residents, and by John Raymond's own words, "under sworn deposition testimony," and I provided you with that. He doesn't employ Peabody residents because we need good workers down here. As if Peabody workers aren't good workers. We employ Peabody workers, by the way. J.D. Raymond pays, at least according to last year's excise tax rolls, about $84 in excise taxes to the city. Through a public records request, we determined that there's still an outstanding bill to the City of Peabody Fire Department resulting from one of the fires in the amount of $70,000, plus or minus $70,432. That's still on the rolls at the fire department. J.D. Raymond is basically a taxpayer-subsidized operation. Yes, they take in an unspecified amount of brush, stumps, and other wood waste from the city's Department of Public Services. I'm going to turn it around. This is a generous donation by the city because it results in additional finished product and revenue to J.D. Raymond, only padding its bottom line. J.D. Raymond operates as it pleases without regulation, without regard to what its operation does to the neighborhood in the city of Peabody. As I indicated, it is not a legally existing, non-conforming use. It's an illegal use. It's not horticultural. It's not manufacturing. They're not entitled to a special permit because the uses are not permitted under the Zoning Ordinance 6.6.4, which is the DDD zoning ordinance section. And they're certainly not exempt from zoning ordinance required conditions. It's unclear what J.D. Raymond is doing on that property. Attorney Crowha referenced that they ought to be able to continue doing what they're doing now and characterize it as a mulch operation, composting and otherwise. Keep in mind, that special permit requirement appears in the Table of Use section of the zoning ordinance under agricultural and other. Well, they're definitely not an agricultural use. We know that for the same reasons why they're not a horticultural use. Everybody knows that. So what's the other? The other would relate back to the DDD allowed uses. And I've already referenced that they're not an allowed use under that litany of 6.6.4 in the DDD. So the land court tried to figure out, they, too, were confused, by the way, what J.D. Raymond does. So after a lot of testimony, a lot of discovery, a lot of back and forth, they basically said that the mulch operation can more specifically be described as a mulch manufacturing, process, storage, and distribution operation. They also said J.D. Raymond and third parties brings logs, raw wood, like the city of Peabody, to the property, which J.D. Raymond then processes, dyes, and stores as finished mulch. J.D. Raymond then uses trucks and trailers to carry the mulch, wood chips, and bark to and from the property. J.D. Raymond also sells the wood chips and logs and related products for lumber and fuel to burn. These are not just, this is not just a mulching and composting operation. On top of that, when we looked at the impacts of the operation, back in October 18th, 2021, we had a noise study down. And when they're grinding mulch, you know, the noise exceeds 91 decibels. And to give you context, sounds above 85 decibels are harmful. I provided with you photographic evidence of the impacts to the adjacent property. I provided you with nuisance photographs, basically. I provided you, and those are in my correspondence to you, Exhibit G and Exhibit H. And among those photographs, you saw mulch dye staining adjacent stormwater areas. You saw mulch blowing from stackers. You saw excessive pile heights. I mean, when we shot the pile heights, we saw pile heights well over 60 feet, referenced in the fire cease-and-desist letter. And they fluctuate. They go up and down. So to monitor that 60-foot requirement is going to take some doing because they do fluctuate. Mulch debris in wetland resource areas. Part of the mitigation that I was talking about that cost us over $250,000 has been overwhelmed by some of this impact. Mulch clogging culverts resulting in flooding. And then I gave you a couple of, a few aerial photographs, and I believe those were in Exhibit G of my submittal to you. I gave you a couple of aerial photographs comparing the operation back in 2005, intensity of use, to 2021, a couple of years ago. And they've only gotten bigger. They get bigger and bigger. It's a creeping incremental growth. And if you look at that 2005 aerial photo, you'll see very little shading of mulch piles. When you see the 2021 pile, or photograph, aerial, it shows about 10 stockpiles in about 177,000 cubic tons, cubic yards, rather, of mulch. And then I gave you further aerial history, going back to 2001, where the property was fairly clear of any activity. 2005, it starts to fill in a little bit when they started their operation. 2008, 2011, 2012, it gets bigger and bigger. 2013, 2014, it takes up about, I count, maybe seven stockpiles. 2019, the property is starting to fill in. The bottom line is, there's a lot, at least from our perspective, there's a lot of talk about they've been there for 20 years. Leave them be. If we were talking about the operation from 20 years ago, we'd not be here today. We could live with the operation when they first started. The operation today is not the operation from 20 years ago. It's grown exponentially, almost four times. So I've indicated that J.D. Raymond is not entitled to this special permit because they don't fit into the characteristic of the DDD mission, the DDD neighborhood articulated in Ordinance Section 3.2.11, and also, as I indicated, 6.6.4. The council, they're not exempt from the special permit requirements that are required under the zoning ordinance. I indicated they're not horticultural. They're not legally existing, non-conforming. The operation exceeds mulching and composting. And I read to you what the land court found them to actually be, which is far beyond what the zoning ordinance allows them to be on a liberal interpretation. There's another pretty important point, actually, two points, underlying why they're not entitled to a special permit. And it has to do with your own Section 17 rule. And you know what that is. You've been applying it consistently. You have to have all governmental permits before you can proceed to the city council. And it's a logical rule. You want to make sure everybody has what they need so that there isn't anything happening after the fact, so that they're not having to come back before you to amend their special permit because of some condition that may prop up in the future. Totally understand it. Well, for two reasons, that Rule 17, Section 17 rule should apply. Number one, they have no order of conditions pursuant to which they can actually implement their stormwater controls, the necessary stormwater controls. They are under appeal. We disagreed with the order of conditions that was issued by the City of Peabody and subsequently by the DEP. And they are currently in, we're currently in adjudication with the DEP's adjudicatory arm. And the law is pretty clear that no work shall be undertaken until all administrative appeals from reviewable decisions have elapsed or if such appeal has been taken, as it has, until procedures before the department have been completed. They're not completed. Just to give you a brief timeline, we've got a hearing scheduled on this for March 29th, and we expect a decision maybe a couple of months after that. But as we stand today, and there's a good chance J.D. Raymond's back before you as a result of what happens at the DEP. There's another reason, and it's closer to home. The dimensional table of the zoning ordinance is pretty specific with regard to setback requirements for uses, not structures, uses in the DDD district. The applicant has failed to provide a plan that shows those setbacks. But in eyeballing it with a little scale, it looks like they might be out of conformance. How so? In accordance with Section 7.2 of the Dimensional Controls, footnote H, for the designated development district, the required setbacks will be applied to the use, the use requiring a minimum, and this is important, of 100 feet from residential abutters, including the residences at Farm Ave. That's why it's so important to understand that the comprehensive permit that is in effect now allows for this residential use. And so I'd like to see a plan that shows the kind of use envelope on this property that would show the setback. At the very least, they need to show that they're operating 30 feet from other property lines. So, or 40 feet from a district access road. So that's all pretty clear, and the application is pretty unclear about this. So if they are in violation of these dimensional controls and they need dimensional relief, you're not the one to give it, right? I chaired the ZBA for almost 10 years. It's a ZBA variance that's required if they are in violation of that. We don't even know because they haven't given us material enough to make that determination. But if they are... But if they are, they need a variance if they intend to encroach on any of those setbacks, which means they haven't gotten all the permits they need to, before they come before you. But we can't make that determination. Last but not least, why they're not entitled to, to a special permit. They're in violation of the zoning ordinance as we speak. It is a prohibited use what they're conducting over at 25 Farm Avenue under Section 1.7.1, prohibited uses. And I'll quote, "In any district, no use will be permitted which will produce a nuisance or hazard from fire or explosion, toxic or corrosive fumes, smoke, odors, obnoxious dust, offensive noise or vibration." It looks like they got the fire permit, so the fire hazard seems to be moderated for the moment, but there are certainly smoke and odors and dust and offensive noise and vibration that come from that, from that property. So if despite all of that, you're still interested in granting this special permit, going back to my original remarks, we'd like conditions that would eliminate the adverse effects that I just discussed on the 27-hour Farm Avenue property and the anticipated residences who are going to be living there, who would like to see the same quiet enjoyment and peaceful existence that all of us in our own homes in the City of Peabody enjoy. And so those restrictions and limitations, conditions would be found in Section 1.2 They'd have to mitigate and obviate the 1.7.1 prohibited uses, 6.1 special regulations and general requirements, 6.2 site plan requirements, 6.6 DDD district requirements. As I indicated, Section 7, they've got to meet the, the dimensional requirements. If they're not going to go for a variance, we've got to know where they're conducting the use so that they can be 100 feet away from residential abutters, they can be 40 feet from a district, district access road, or otherwise 30 feet from other property lines. And then in my materials, we went through great length to propose some conditions for your consideration. Most of those conditions are based in the zoning ordinance, and I tried to tie that in for you. But we went a step further and we, we proposed a plan that would allow us to kind of peacefully coexist without, without terrible impact to the anticipated residences. And so there are a lot of conditions, but obviously seven pages, but again, they all have root in the, in the zoning ordinance. And I would point you to Exhibit A of the materials, Exhibit A, Exhibit 1, and that has the fold-out plan. And that fold-out plan kind of divides the J.D. Raymond property into two sectors, a northern sector and a southern sector. The southern sector is where we would propose to have them place all of their piles. And the northern zone would be a place where they could maybe do some pickup and drop-off, like temporary storage while their trucks come and go into the property. You know, really trace amounts of, of, of mulch that would be, that would be stored just to accommodate the, their, their wholesale. And also, the, included in this plan is the creation, the installation of a berm on our property bound with mature vegetation. And we gave you a, a planting schedule of how that would look. Included in that are limitations on pile heights. We didn't make that up. The limitation on pile heights, and to be clear, did not come from the fire department. The limitation on pile heights for the fire department or for fire and safety, the limitation on pile heights that we propose have to do with your zoning requirements and making this compliant with those prohibited uses, making those prohibited uses allowed uses. And they came right from a community development memo that came out in October 14th, 2022, where they talk about a recommended height restriction of 25 feet for unprocessed material and 15 feet for finely ground mulch. And they also talk about misting and dust suppression operations and that type of thing. Again, it all came from Brendan Callahan's memo to the Conservation Commission back in 2022. We didn't make this up. So just to summarize those seven pages, I, I don't want to go through it in detail. You've, I think, read it. But a lot of those conditions would contemplate restricting operating hours. Right now, they operate throughout the night. You know, I've got to put my resident hat on for a moment. I live a mile away from the site in Centerfield on Reed Road. A couple of nights ago, I heard them grinding away at 4:00 in the morning, all the way over in Centerfield. Now, I'm high, they're, they're, they're at a higher elevation, but I heard it. And I was, I was a little surprised. It wasn't the first time, but it was particularly loud. So it's Thursday, this was Tuesday. How do we monitor this? So we propose requiring an annual, an annual emissions review, preventing migration of airborne emissions, gas, smoke, odors, obnoxious dust or vapor, offensive noise or vibration, or objectionable effluent. This came from a condition already imposed upon them at another operation, another J.D. Raymond operation in Bellingham, where they also have a special permit to operate. That idea, and I go through it in extensive detail, is almost lifted word for word from that condition that they're already under. Limit pile heights, as I indicated through the Community Development and Planning Memo, installing a misting system or dust suppression per Community Development and Planning Memo, regular property and street cleaning maintenance, that came out of your DPS comments. And by the way, you had 74 pages of public health complaints that go back to 2012 on this, on this matter. So this notion of nuisance being fabricated by Mr. Weiss, it's not. It goes back a lot longer than that, before he even owned the property. Relocate the mulch operation per the concept plans, require J.D. Raymond to maintain logs so that if there's ever a compliance issue, you guys can come in, or the building commissioner can go in and review their logs and make sure that they're compliant. Sediment removal, operation changes to processing mulch, stackers, conveyors on windy days. Right now, there's none of that. There is no monitoring, there is no mitigation of windborne emission from that site, and there's a lot of it. If you went to the site tomorrow during the broad daylight, you'd see for yourself. If the pictures weren't compelling, we invite you to 27-hour Farm Avenue to take a look. At any time, we'd be happy to host. But those prohibited uses which are not, and those prohibited uses which are not mulching and composting, trash processing, which they've admitted they do on the property, recycling, manufacture of biofuels, processing of wood chips, trucking terminal, that all of those be prohibited and expressly not allowed under this special permit. So we talked about the, the plan. We talked about why it ought to be conditioned. You know, we gave you some financial records that are publicly available that came out of that land court case that shows you just from their own trucking activity that from 2005 through, through the current day, they are over three times in size, scope and scale. There's that documented nuisance I referred to in the Board of Health record. John Raymond admits it operates all night. They do nothing to control odors and dust, and they do nothing to change operations in windy conditions. They do as they please. J.D. Raymond provides, as I indicated, very little to no benefit to the city, and there's an extensive record of Board of Health complaints. You know, I found laughable that they compared the J.D. Raymond use to ours. Yeah, in name only, we have the same special permit that they're seeking, but let me tell you what Michael Weiss does on his property, if you haven't seen it. He doesn't, I'll tell you what he doesn't do. He doesn't manufacture, process or distribute mulch product.
Jason, if I, if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, just for the sake of, of moving along and not being redundant, if anything that you haven't said before, feel free to speak about.
I'm going to omit it.
But, okay, thank you.
I've got to wrap up pretty shortly.
Perfect.
I appreciate the, the diligence, I really do. But he doesn't do any of the things J.D. Raymond does. What he does is he stores an average of about 160 cubic yards of product in May and June. Those are his peak uses to support his landscaping business. He stores on average on those off months 30 cubic yards of mulch product. He stores mulch product within enclosures and concrete barriers. And I gave you pictures. I mean, if you compare the picture of his mulch piles to theirs, his mulch piles maybe come up five feet, theirs go up to 62. Compare their mulch operation, again, they're at 176,888 cubic yards in 10 stockpiles. It's a totally different operation. There is nothing similar about what we do and what, what they do. We, we don't require a fire permit. We don't have windblown emission off of any of our products stored on site. To my knowledge, we've never had a, we've never had a complaint. I did mention that Fran Galucci, I noticed, wrote her email to you, and I thought it was a very effective email only because it talks about the ZBA history with the property. And I note she opposes the issuance of this special permit for the reasons stated, for the reasons she stated in her email to, to you of January 16th. So in conclusion, we would encourage you to deny this application or postpone action on the special permit until a site visit by the council on the property can be conducted so you can see the true magnitude and nature of what's going on there. You can obviously grant the application, but we would encourage you to do so with conditions consistent with those provided in, in the opposition memo that I provided you Exhibit A with the plans and the Community Development memo, and also in conformance with the requirements of the zoning ordinance and addressing the extensive record of nuisance complaints to the city, City's Department of Health and Human Services, and to grant any other such relief as, as you find necessary. And I, I really do thank you for hearing me out on this, but I just want to go back very briefly to that, that issue of the dimensional controls. I, I don't think that we know the true extent of what they're allowed to do because we don't know what their setbacks are. Thank you very much, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Attorney Panos. Is there anyone else in the auditorium that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we're going to move to Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak in favor? We've got someone coming on.
Hi. Good, good evening. For everybody that doesn't know me, I'm Michael Weiss. I am the Butter 27 Rea Farm Ave. Thank you. I appreciate everybody listening to all the stuff we presented tonight. I know it was a lot of everybody's time, and we appreciate it. I built my business in Peabody for the last 30 years too, and I currently employ Peabody residents. Also, I also do give back to the city with different areas, with the islands, with different parks, the library through the years. And, and when I bought the property, the mulch pile was there when I bought the pile. It was half the size. Now it's, the piles are just getting bigger and bigger. There needs to be some, some limitation on the material blowing across the, the property. I've tried to communicate with, sit down with the Butter, Mr. Raymond's guys to try to come up with a plan so we all can work together and be there. But we, we haven't gotten anywhere, and I'm just as angry as everybody else that's here. So I've invested a lot of time and effort on bringing this project in, and I want to do good for the city, just like everybody else. So just hoping maybe we could find a way to work, work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak either way? All right, we're going to jump back to Zoom. We had someone with a hand raised, but they might be gone. Oh, they're back. We're going to try to pull up Mr. Russ. Please state your name and address for the record, Mr. Russ Donovan.
Yeah, this is Russ Donovan, 12 Querrose, South Peabody. I'm not in the Butter, probably about a mile away. And for the record, I am really surprised the city allows the use of that property as such as it is right now. I've called the Board of Health on numerous occasions about the obnoxious odors, and I just heard tonight the noise I've been hearing, I guess is coming from that operation. The wetlands are right there. That mulch pile's got about 60 feet plus high, multiple piles. You drive down Farm Ave, you can't, sometimes you need the windshield wipers on because of the, the air quality. You have to put your air conditioner on to keep this, keep the smog out of the smoke and dust. And it's really time for that operation to go someplace else. It doesn't belong in Peabody. I, I always consider that the last piggy in Peabody. It's time to get rid of it because it doesn't fit in our, our neighborhood in our city Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak in opposition? Last call. Seeing none, Counselor Gamache.
Yes, thank you. I want to thank both sides for coming out this evening and giving us their opinions on it. This is not an easy issue. There are certain things that, you know, are said on both sides, and you can take it for whichever side you want to believe is, is right. The, the issue of existing nonconforming use has been in court, it's still being appealed. But what we have before us this evening is an application for mulching, composting and outdoor storage, which is in fact, and you know, Attorney Panos mentioned that it's two different types of operation, but that other operation that they received the special permit for, under the same guise as what J.D. Raymond is before us this evening, they can do the same thing. They don't tell you that. They don't tell you that, but they can because they've got the same exact permit that they're seeking tonight. The issue becomes, just because they don't go over and above the mulching, composting, and outdoor storage, doesn't mean they can't. And that falls upon the owners of that property. I have been out several times, and I will tell you, I was at the fire in 2010. And the problem back then was, the fire department told J.D. Raymond's crew to stand down. And that crew that J.D. Raymond hires knows how to put out a composting fire. You have to use heavy equipment, spread the piles, and then put it out. You cannot put it out with water. And the fire department's reaction was, let's get in some materials, probably from Masport, I don't know where it came from, but it cost them a lot of money to put that fire out. And today, and I'm not going to speak for the fire department, but I think they've realized that if there is a fire, God forbid, that they would allow J.D. Raymond's crew to use the equipment to dig into that pile, spread it, and put it out rather quickly. There's a lot for us to indulge right now, and we've, I mean, Mr. Panos put in quite a bit of work, a lot of pictures, a lot of opinions, same as J.D. Raymond's. And it's for us tonight to understand what we can do with this property. Now, I've got my own understanding of, you know, what's going on, and it's my opinion that, you know, buyer beware. That's all I can tell you. When they came in in 2017, they asked for a special permit, and they were granted it. And lo and behold, three years, four years later, they come up and say, oh, we can put a 40B. And it was a friendly 40B. I'm, you know, back then, we were fighting to make sure that we got our quotas as far as the 10% rule, and we were welcoming, some areas welcoming, some areas not. And we got our 40Bs. And we were threatened with 40Bs all over the place. King Street was the first one, okay? And, you know, there's history with that. Then came the Endicott Street, then came Oak Street, then came Farm Ave, then came 128 Newbury Street. We've got one development, one, right now that is actively working on a 40B, and that's 128 Newbury Street. And I don't know why it's taken so long for them to come forward and start doing their 40Bs, whether, you know, and I honestly believe that's the reason why they're here tonight, because they know that the operation next door that they knew was there, and then they get the 40B, and they're having a hard time trying to convince themselves that people are going to live there. Now, you've got our public services across the street, you've got the mainest property, which is the corner of Forest and Farm Ave, one residential unit that was there, and they had no problems with the mulch permit back in 2017. And I'm not going to speak for them, but if it were me, and I said, okay, with the mulch permit, and all of a sudden you're dropping 116 units in my backyard, I'd be a little upset. But they're not here tonight to mention, to do that. That's my own opinion. But you've got an industrial park just over the hill from Farm Ave, from our DPW yard. You've got a 160, 200-foot, what is that, that tower you've got there, blob, you know, cell tower? That was permitted by the city council. I was on the council then. And, you know, you got that. They're always going to see that. Actually, they're going to be going like this because they're going to be so close to it. And you've also got, I don't want to call it a farm, but you could classify it as farm. Mr. Wood's got animals there, he's got goats, he's got cows, he's got chickens, he's got everything. I mean, what happens if a cow goes moo in the morning? Are we going to be hearing about that as a nuisance? You know, we have got a lot of material before us, and I've got conditions that I've written up, and I think I have satisfied most of the important conditions that was given to us by the opposition. I think I've got everything, you know, satisfied with the Health Department, the Fire Department, DPW. Those are the ones that sent the recommendations and the comments in. I don't necessarily agree with community developments, and it is a recommendation. We don't have to accept it. But if I was the petitioner, and they told me that I have to keep my piles 25 feet high when the state fire marshal says I can have 60 feet, and the fire department has sent a memo saying that they've encompassed everything, and they don't have any problems with the existing site now, which is the most recent one that we've got, it says, add some more fire hydrants. They've met all the other criteria that the fire department has asked for. So we can go down the line, and down the line, and down the line, and understand what's, what one person wants and what the other person doesn't want to give. That's, that's something that, you know, is out of our control. We have a special permit that I will condition, and I firmly believe that we have answered most of the questions that would allow for the permit to be, to be through. And let's face it, there ain't one of us here that's going to say that there's not going to be an appeal on this, okay? I mean, if you're a betting man, put it on it right now, because they're going to walk out the door. If this is approved tonight, and they're going to go to court, and they're going to file an injunction or whatever they want to file, an appeal, that's fine. It's not the first time we've, we've been in a quandary of giving a permit and somebody filing against us. That's, that's part of the job. But the thing that really, and I've been on this council for 28 years, and I have never seen a situation like this where we're the judge and jury here. One side says this, one side says that, we got to take, we got to take a position. And my position is, is that buyer beware. That's the bottom line. If I bought a house, and there was a pig farm next to me, I'd think twice. I wouldn't want to go stay at a pig farm, oh, you got to go. Buyer beware. Now, we can talk about a friendly 40B. Personally, I don't like 40Bs because as the petitioner, I mean, as the objector said tonight, let's go by the zoning, let's go by the zoning. 40B doesn't go by the zoning. We have no limitations on a 40B. They can do what they want, and that's what we've got. We have got somebody who believes in the zoning, who says, this is the zoning, this is the zoning, and this is the zoning, and the city council has no authority to deny it. They dumped it in the yard, 116 units. And does it go towards, we're over 10.7%, I think, right now, and that's not counting it. So if you can't get financing and you walk away, so be it. We still got the 10%. There isn't one person on this council that says 40Bs are good for the city of Peeby. Ask our school system, because they're going to bring students into the schools. So let's be honest with each other, okay? And I, and I got another thing that really, and I hate to do it, but I'm gonna. In 2017, Mr. Panos came before us, I wasn't here, but Counselor McGinn, Counselor Turco, Counselor Manning Martin, and Tommy Gould, Counselor Gould, he was here. I got the minutes to the meeting. And they came in, and on page five of it, it really kills me here, that Mr. Panos said, "The proposed uses, however, will be consistent with and in harmony with those conducted immediately adjacent and across the street from the property." This is what he told the city council on record when he came before the same exact permit that's here tonight, mulching, composting, and outdoor storage. And then it goes further. Now, he had mentioned on his site plan that he wanted the petitioner to put up abidis or whatever type of natural buffer. And this is Mr. Panos's words, "We prefer to," and there's no such requirement in the, in the fire code, "and the reason why we'd rather do just a regular chain link to keep the, keep the property properly fenced in from, from outsiders, keeping it safe, is, quite frankly, an impervious fence is quite expensive, given the vast expanse." So here's someone that come in and said to the city council, oh, we don't want to put up a site impervious, you know, we don't want to put natural product in there, we don't want to grow trees, but let us put in a chain link fence. That's fine. I got no problem with that, but this is his words. And he just told them that they want to put natural, but natural impervious blockers. Goes for once, you go for the other. And even though this was 2017, and he's got the mulch pile, he can, I mean, he's got the mulch permit, he can do what J.D. Raymond is doing today. It's not, we're not stopping him from doing that. But it's the Hatfields and the McCoys here, folks. That's the bottom line. No matter what happens, they're going to court. And I, for one, think it's our responsibility to issue what is before us, and that is a permit that is mulching, composting, and outdoor storage. It's the same exact one that is from me to Counselor Rosig all the way on the same area. So my contention is, I'm going to, I'm going to support this, and I am going to place conditions on it that I think meet most of the requirements that Mr. Panos is asked for, and let it, let it go to court and see what happens. But the appeal's going to go on, and through the appeals, that operation's going to continue to go. They can still, you know, even though Mr. Panos says it's an illegal use, well, it's been there, and it was not brought up as an illegal use until Mr. Panos brought it to the city's attention. There wasn't one of our offices that went out there and said, shut down, you're an illegal use. They kept doing what they were doing. And yes, the piles were big. That's part of the condition that I'm going to make. State law says 60 feet, you know? State law says that the fire department has to, has to have access around the piles. We're going to do that. So again, I mean, I've, I'll say it again, I've been on this council for 28 years and never seen a situation like this where one of Butter, who's got a, one of Butter who has a permit exactly the same, and the guy right next door, and they're trying to imply seven pages. Did you guys read all these? Seven pages of conditions. I mean, if it was, if he was the petitioner, he wouldn't even have brought any of these. He just, that's wishful thinking. So again, I'm going to yield to the rest of the council, but my opinion is simple. With the conditions that I plan on putting on this permit, will suffice for the Conservation Commission, will suffice for the, the Health Department, Fire Department, and DPW. And that's the memorandums we have. Other than the memorandum of 25 feet from Brendan Callahan, I don't think it's, it's fair for us to limit something like that where the law says that, and the fire department's agreed, because it falls under the fire department, that it's 60 feet. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go forward with, with what I think is the right thing to do, and I would ask the rest of the council to indulge me in, in voting favor in this. So I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Gamache. Counselor Manning Martin remotely, are you still with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I couldn't agree more, Counselor Gamache, that this is the Hatfields and the McCoys. Couldn't agree more. He took the words right out of my mouth. But that, that really doesn't concern me. They don't get along. What, what concerns me is, you know, Counselor Gamache, you mentioned 40Bs and that we, the city of Peeby, there isn't one council that likes 40Bs. And what these are, are affordable, it's affordable housing. And that particular 40B was a friendly 40B. And I don't need to remind everybody that friendly 40Bs are negotiated directly with the mayor. You get the approval of the mayor, it's an agreement. So that was an agreement that was entered into through a process to bring affordable housing in an agreeable way. And the city has made concerted effort to attract and provide affordable housing. And this, I'm very concerned with our SHI, our subsidized housing inventory, as you mentioned, it was at, I think, 10.7, Counselor Gamache, and that dropped. It was at about 11.6. Now we're down to 10.7. If we lose these 116 units because it is never, it's never built, not only will 200 people not be able to have affordable housing, but will those 116 units, I think, will drop off our SHI, and will plummet below 10%. And then we'll be getting the 40Bs that no one wants, the ones that are rammed down your throat. This one wasn't. This one was not rammed down our throat. So I'm very, very concerned that we are, this, not only is it hurting the Weiss project, but it's hurting the citizens of Peeby, the present and future residents and taxpayers by just kind of saying, well, you should have known better when you bought your property that you were buying, a property next to an illegal use that no one was going to control, that's gotten further out of control. I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's logical. And the only thing that is going to come from us dropping below 10% of our SHI is one thing, and that's more unfriendly 40Bs. So for us to really, it seems like we're bending over backwards to go out of our way to approve a special permit with conditions when the number one condition to operate was to have a special permit. So we're going to put conditions on, for something that a business was operating for, I don't know, 10, 20 years unlawfully, illegally? And, and I do appreciate Fran Galugi, Fran Galugi's letter that she sent us that gave a quick history of, of the problems and how long they've been going on. So I think people have been trying to rein in that, that business, and I think they've been unsuccessful. And I did have a question. I did see Chris Dowling there, I believe, for the fire department. I wanted to know, when did they come in compliance? I know that Mr. Dowling went out there, I think, three years ago, and then recently, probably because of this petition for a special permit, this application for a special permit, went out, and now they're in compliance. Have they been out of compliance for three years? Did we not go out and check? These things are very dangerous, these mulching operations are very dangerous. And I, I don't know why we would be taking an action that would hurt potential residents or a potential project. And I'm flabbergasted at the amount of money that Mr. Weiss has already paid to the city. I think that number came up to $788,000, $436,000 on a building permit alone. Why are we, why are we doing this? Why are we, we're going to lose that, those 116 units, we're going to drop below our SHI, and then we're going to get more of these 40Bs that, that we don't want. That's coming. Because our SHI is dropping, and we shouldn't be taking any action like this that's going to perpetuate that, because we're going to be in that position that none of us wanted to be in, that we were in for a very long time. We got out of it for a minute, and an action like this is going to get us back in hot water. So I'm very concerned about approving this special permit. I don't, with conditions, even so, I don't think that this business is prone to following the rules, playing by the rules. And what kind of message are we sending to people who do play by the rules? Don't play by the rules until you get caught, and then we'll just approve it. So I don't care that they don't get along. I don't care at all. What I do care about is the future of the city, the taxpayers, and future residents, and the, and the situation that we're perpetuating by not being more friendly not being more friendly to this friendly 40B. I don't think we're being friendly at all with this petitioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Manning Martin. Captain Dowling is on standby. Was that a question or was that just rhetorical?
Actually, I would, uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, with respect to the three year span of when he was out there initially, and then just coming into compliance with his visit now.
All right. Captain Dowling is approaching the podium. Welcome.
Hi, Council. Captain Dowling, City of PBD Fire Prevention Officer.
Uh, thank you, Captain. Could you, yeah, could you explain the, the history with respect to your dealings? Um, I, I believe you issued something three years ago and then they just came into compliance in November, maybe?
Yeah, so a quick history on it. Um, we had the two fires. And as a result of the second fire, there was actually a new code regulating these type of mulch piles. And in fact, Chief Pazdin at the time, he was on the subcommittee and so wasn't a representative from J D Raymond. So in the end, there was a new fire code that was after 2012, but then in 2015, there was a, a comprehensive fire code that was promulgated. And so we had challenges with the clarity of the new code because it was a totally different one. So we had challenges related, related to the clarity of the, the new code. And the city was waiting for more guidelines and support from the State Fire Marshal's Office. So finally, in 2000 and in 2022, we had a joint inspection with the PBD Fire Prevention Inspectors and a representative from the State Fire Marshal's Office Code Compliance. And we went through a thorough inspection and found 10 non-compliant issues to the code. And so that's when the process began. We issued a violation letter. We gave them time periods, reasonable time periods based on common sense. And the approach we had resulted in J D Raymond's operation becoming a compliant mulch processing operation. And the last inspection I had was, was this, this January 17th. And that was a a hands-on look at the, uh, the mulch pile heights. And they were all under 60 feet. So based on that last one, and there's one other issue was the, the water supply. That was the 10th non-compliant issue on my initial letter. They did in fact install a fire hydrant. But that didn't complete the requirement, but we wanted to wait there until the result of the special permit hearing because we weren't gonna make them install all that infrastructure if they weren't even gonna be able to operate. So that's the only issue, but based off of us working to gain voluntary compliance with J D Raymond, I issued a permit to store forest products. And that was on January 17th of this year.
Thank you, Captain. And lastly, do we have a major mulch fire years ago where a firefighter was hurt terribly? Do you recall?
Um, no, I don't recall. Was, that was at, on that site?
No, no, not on that site. But, but my point being, could you explain how, um, dangerous mulch, all these mulch piles and mulch fires are? They're very dangerous, correct?
Correct. Any fire is dangerous and, you know, we've learned a lot about the fire suppression tactics we would use with, um, with a mulch pile fire. But what I do and we focus on is fire prevention. That's what the, these, the, uh, compliance order was based on. So they would be, um, in compliance. And when, we also have, someone mentioned, uh, previous fires, we have a, a new emergency action plan as a result of the 2012 fire. And, um, so our tactics are to work with the J D Raymond people that work there every day and don't want to lose their product. We, um, they ensure that they're keeping temperature logs on their, on their piles. So I mean, it's in their best interest to prevent a fire. So they have to and, and they know they're on a schedule to turn them. That's part of our prevention plan with them.
Sure. Thank you. Um, with respect to being all these 60-foot mulch piles, being so close to, uh, a 116 unit of 200 people, that that's, doesn't sound like it should be encouraged. Is that, is that a concern for fire safety to have that multiple, that many people, um, in units, size unit next to such a, um, huge operation of, of this mulch business?
I, I know the code requires setbacks to property lines. And, and I enforce everything under the, you know, my purview, which is the fire code. So what I'll enforce is that the, the setbacks are enforced. And to the property line, I don't have any other, um, enforcement power on that to, as to what, uh, use, property use is abutting it. But right now, I based my inspection on, well, a similar use group right next to it, which would be the Weiss property. So.
But no, you don't, you can't compare the magnitude though, right? We have one with a special permit that's living within a special permit. Uh, and then we have one that doesn't have a special permit that isn't abiding by really anything. So I guess I was just looking for your opinion
Okay.
with respect to residences near such a, um, mulch lodge, huge mulch operation. Uh, but I'm not gonna get the opinion. I understand you're gonna just recite code. But I thank you for, um, answering my questions. Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Captain Dowling. Um, Councilor Manning Martin, are you all set? Do you have any other comments?
Uh, no, it's time. Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Um, thank you, Captain. I, we have, uh, Councilors Turco and Rosigal on the queue, but I think, Councilor Gamache, I, I might jump to you real quick. You want us to jump in?
Yes, uh, really quick. Um, these aren't gonna fall off. These 116, you just said they're gonna build it no matter what. And with the increase of the time capacity afforded to 40Bs, every 40B that is not included on the city's, um, count for SHI will go back on, under the state's, uh, purview. And that's almost another 180 units. So I, I just want to clarify that, that, you know, with the extensions and all that stuff, um, we will be getting an additional 180 units back on our rolls because of the, uh, governor extending the, um, the time period for these types of, um, 40B units. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Gamache. Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Council Manning, uh, actually took some of my thunder, but while I have Captain Dowling here. Captain, I know you're taking a sip of your water. Did you get the water?
No.
Oh. Sorry about that. Um, so the, well, Council Manning Martin brought up the non-compliance with your requests from 2022 and I, and I shared the exact same concern. Um, I, I'm not here to litigate for either one of these parties or, you know, they can handle their, their own business. I'm just here, I, I have two concerns. The safety of our fire department, um, and, um, the wetlands protection in the area. And, and I don't think that, um, neither one has adhered to. Um, so since I have you up here, I'm just gonna ask you, the last paragraph of your letter, and, and you briefly touched on it, said, uh, J D Raymond has installed one fire hydrant on the property. Should the special permit be granted, a condition will be the installation of a system of hydrants. Um, and that's the way you explained it to me earlier, but Attorney Crowha previously said that there'd be one additional fire hydrant. And I just want this for the record, that this is not gonna be one additional fire hydrant. This is gonna be a system of fire hydrants around the, the entire property. Is, do I have that correct?
Correct. If the special permit's granted and we move forward with that condition, then we're gonna involve, once again, the State Fire Marshal's Office, engineers for them to review. Based off of the, the fire load that they have would be the maximum fire load, meaning the, the largest of piles are allowable and how many they would have. We would, they would calculate a water supply that we need. So it might not just be only the one hydrant that was proposed. It could be a system.
Okay. And I imagine your concern is the safety of your fellow firefighters also. So, you know, you're gonna get the extent of that. I mean, personally, not being a firefighter, um, I, I, just reading your memo in that last sentence, I actually missed one, and this was the important one. However, issues related to the firefighting, water supply, and fire protection remain pending, depending on the outcome of the special permit process. Well, y- your initial request to do this was in 2022. Um, there was also a cease and desist that J D Raymond challenged. Um, so in that two year, but they challenged it, they continued to operate, but yet felt no need to address the, the danger to our, our firefighters. And that bothers me. And, you know, similarly, you have the, um, and just give me one more second on, I'm gonna go to another subject real quick. Um, similarly with the wetlands and the resource areas, um, the, the wind, um, the, the carryover, I was on the site on Tuesday. Uh, you can clearly see, um, the, the mulch blowing into the resource areas. You could see it on the snow. It, the snow was very helpful to, to see that. So I just, I, I support J D Raymond in the sense that they have been there for 20 years. They've been a good neighbor. Um, you know, everybody that spoke here tonight about everything that everybody does great in this city, I agree. You, you, you all on this side, and Mr. Weiss, uh, has done some tremendous things, uh, for the city. But I'm gonna keep all that separate and say, I'll support J D Raymond. I wasn't in favor of the 40B right from the get-go because I don't believe that, um, that is a very smart move, putting a 40B, um, in what is currently, although it is the DDD, it is currently a commercial industrial area by and large. And when I first saw that 40B going next to the, um, the mulch, my first thought, uh, because my wife was born on this day and I'm very familiar with it, was October 15th, 1973, which was the Chelsea Fire. And the Chelsea Fire started exactly for this reason, because they put housing in a paper mill area, um, which then the paper mills caught on fire and spread to the, the entire city of Chelsea. So apparently we haven't learned from that, but in the same sense, the, the mayor, as Council Manning said, approved a friendly 40B in the area. Um, it is not my position to throw J D Raymond out of somewhere where they have been for 20 somewhat years. Everybody knew that it was there. Um, and yet the, uh, community development and everybody approved this, this housing, uh, project. And here we are today to try, to try to deal with that. That's all I want to do. I, you know, as far as I'm concerned, they're both permitted to be there. Um, or J D Raymond, I, I hopefully will be permitted to be there tonight. I do have some expectations of J D Raymond of, you know, better behavior. But Kevin, and not just to keep you up there forever, I just want to ask you one additional, uh, question. The, the $70,000, do they owe the $70,000 or do they not owe the $70,000? Cause this is our one bite at the apple. If the fire department wants the $70,000 and feels that they're owed, um, then we'll get it tonight. Otherwise, I, I don't think there'll be the appetite to approve this special permit because it's been owed, you know, in my estimation, you know, since the fires. If, if anybody's given the okay to rescind that $70,000 debt, um, then let me know that now. But I, I couldn't find anybody that told me that they rescinded the, the, uh, the debt.
That's not really a question I can answer. But I can tell you I was told, because this was, just came up, about the outstanding invoices. And as you know, I deal with code compliance and I have nothing to do with accounts receivable or anything. But the question was asked, I ran the question up. And from what I understand, that there's nothing owed by J D Raymond to the fire department.
Okay. If that's your understanding, then I, then I'm okay with that. So thank you. I don't want to keep you up there forever. I would like to ask Ms. Crowha just very briefly, um, if she's the, uh, speaking on behalf of the applicant, um, just to, to address those issues with the, um, and I understand this has all been appealed, uh, but this, you guys have been operating there for 20 somewhat years. And as I, I said, I want to help you. I, I want to approve your permit, but, um, I, I don't think we should be waiting for fire suppression systems, um, knowing that, what you know, that twice we've had some major fires in that area, um, because of these mulch piles. Fortunately, you know, it's been a decade since that's occurred, thankfully. But what's the holdup with, you know, just installing the fire suppression? I, I understand it's costly to you, but you operated and you made money for quite some time while this was happening, but you didn't seem to have, and when I say you, you and your client, didn't seem to have much care about the safety of the fire department in the meantime. So I just want you to address that and, um, when that will be done, if your permit is approved.
Sure, Counselor. Yes, and, and that's a fair question. The, the letter came out in 2022. The property is surrounded by wetlands, so anything that happens on the property does require wetlands conservation approval. And so as part of our application process, at the time, we knew where one fire hydrant was going to go. We had been waiting and, and Captain Dowling can speak to this, but we had been waiting for the State Fire Marshal to come out to help create a system of where the other hydrant or hydrants should go on the system in addition to that one. So when we went through the permitting through Conservation Commission, we included the one hydrant that we knew the location of on the plan. And as soon as we got the order of conditions from Conservation Commission, we went ahead and installed it. And we essentially got in trouble with the DEP and the Conservation Commission because we technically weren't supposed to because the decision was on appeal. And so in some ways, a, and the, the six-foot chain link fence also came out of the fire department and we put that in also. And that was another thing that really wasn't supposed to happen because it's within the buffer area. But we explained to DEP that it was a fire safety issue to get both of those in, and we didn't want to wait for all of the appeals to go on. And so it's been a little bit of both. It's been a little bit of waiting for the State Fire Engineer to understand where the other hydrants should go. And a little bit of not being able to pursue some of the upgrades and the protection to the wetlands and the protection to the stormwater that we have been attempting to permit since the Noticement 10 was filed, I think, April of '22, right? And then it was granted in early '23. So the fire hydrant went in shortly after it was granted.
Okay. And if you're approved tonight, um, and, you know, obviously you're dependent on Captain Dowling's timeframe and, and returning a plan to you. Um, is, it can, I, I'd like to ensure that this is your first priority is to, is to install the fire suppression system first and foremost, so that we don't have an incident here and then 11 city councils have egg on their face because, um, a firefighter was, was injured or, or something happened in, in that area. Um, so I'd like a commitment from J D Raymond for that. And, and Councilor Gamache can maybe put a timeframe on the, uh, a reasonable timeframe on the installation of that system. Um, secondarily, you know, it's, it's mentioned throughout these 300 and some, somewhat pages about, um, runoff into the wetlands, um, blowing mulch into the wetlands. Uh, are you the person that I would speak to about what mitigation you use for that? Or is there an expert that you would rather me ask these questions to?
I'm happy to answer them if you wanted to.
Yeah.
Further engineers or J D Raymond is here, but I guess there's, there's a couple of questions wrapped in there. So in 2013, DEP reached an agreement with J D Raymond, and part of that was a 25-foot buffer to the wetlands, which J D Raymond has been complying with. There are certain other operational aspects that they put into place. Um, they do, they use dampers for wind. It's windier to make sure that things don't blow off of the mulch piles. They don't grind on windy days. And that's sort of the existing condition. Right now, the plan that has been approved by Conservation Commission and approved by the State DEP includes two infiltration basins, very large infiltration basins, and a sediment four bay and a separator. So essentially the runoff from the mulch piles will go into the separator. Um, will go into the sediment four bay, and this is where I might need our engineer to describe the rest of the process. But then they get held in the infiltration basin, and that keeps them from going into the wetlands. Right now, there's not really any storm water on the site, uh, any storm water protection on the site. Um, the proposal also includes a little concrete wall basically around there to help protect any runoff from, from going off of the work area of the site.
Okay. And, and because Attorney Panos had brought it up, you, you had mentioned, um, the court order to put some sort of trees at, at a portion of the property. Um, but he wanted. order to put some sort of trees at a portion of the property, but he wants it as a requirement, I mean, a condition on the permit. But you already required to do that through the?
Right. So our proposal, our proposal, the Conservation Commission, included 35 Colorado blue spruce trees. So those are part of what we're attempting to put in when the appeals are finished and when we can start doing the work under the Order of Conditions. Attorney Panos said that we're trying to work cooperatively, and, and they can't get any traction from us, and that's just not a true description of what's happened. We've been at this now for three years in four different courts and countless administrative hearings. He knows that the conditions that he put on don't let J.D. Raymond operate its business. It just doesn't. So the trees were put up there. Conservation Commission thought that they protected the wetlands together with the stormwater to keep the blow-off and to keep any of the stormwater runoff contained on the site.
Okay. As far as the property line between the Weiss property, is there anything going there with, you guys putting anything along that property line?
Right. So the, the trees will go on the J.D. Raymond site, but facing the neighbor, facing Mr. Weiss's property. And so will most of the stormwater system. So when we talk about the setbacks, it's really setbacks from the wetlands because the property line is sort of in the middle or on the other side of the setbacks. But this, and this was in my submiddle, it's not anything new. But this is a close-up of the plan. So, so the mulch piles are here. The infiltration basins would go here and here, and Mr. Weiss's property is right here. And then, it's on a different plan, but the trees run here on the infiltration basins between where the mulch piles will be and Mr. Weiss's site.
Okay. And just two other questions. What, do you, do you ever cover any of your mulch piles at all? Because I did read like the state of New York requires like some piles to be covered, piles. And, and I realize the size of your piles, but also, I do, through my work, we do a lot of business with Eastern Salt that supplies salt to most of the state of Massachusetts, and their piles are as high as yours, yet they cover them. So they can, it can be done. I'm just curious if, if you've ever put any thought into?
Yeah, it's really, it's really more of a fire issue. So the piles, to make the mulch, the piles need to get hot. So the mulch processes by, by having hot piles, that's part of the 60 feet. So a 25-foot pile doesn't allow the mulch to cure the way it would in a 60-foot pile because it needs to have heat to do that. And so they're constantly monitoring the heat, but they need to move the piles around. So if you covered it or sprayed it routinely with water, then it would trap the heat inside the pile and create more of a fire issue than what they have today. So right now, the piles are high, but they're constantly moving them around the outside to make sure that the hot spots that generate inside are distributed evenly and safely throughout the pile.
Okay. I think the document I read references finished piles that are ready for distribution that can be covered. But again, that's state of New York. I just wanted to inquire about that. What's the, what's the plan for, for smell, for odors emitting off the pile? Do you guys have a plan in place? It's another thing I read in, in the New York requirements, that there is like odor mitigation requirements. Do you have anything that you intend on doing if there's complaints from residents or neighbors about odors?
Right. So part of the odors come down to limiting active work during windy conditions to keep them, keep the odors from spreading from the property and controlling the heat, I believe. But I think that's really what it comes down to is, is the windy conditions.
Okay. I, I mean, I'm just confused because if, in the state of New York, they can require covering and they can require the piles to be sprayed to mitigate the odors. We can't do that in Massachusetts?
I think it depends on the amount of spray and the amount of heat that it traps inside the mulch pile. But we could certainly look at an odor control plan as part of the special permit.
Okay. Yeah. And that's what Counselor Gamache and I had previously discussed. I just, again, through to Counselor Gamache, Counsel, you covered your bases. It was a very good presentation. I just hope that, you know, the fire suppression system and the runoff into the wetlands or the blowing into the wetlands is something that we, we can address in the permit. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you all set, Counselor Turco?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go back to Counselor Gamache.
If I may, and it might help to understand what my conditions are going to be, and that would probably eliminate some of the questions that are going to be asked. I have approximately, I think, 13. But anyways, the conditions will be, and will answer most of the recommendations from our boards that we, we sought for recommendations. The first one would be to keep the entrance exit areas clean and free of debris. Two, place a second fire hydrant on site. This hydrant will be located where the PFD says would be most effective and is not limited to just one. Okay? If the fire department says that they need more than one fire hydrant, they will, they will, they will allow the fire department's discretion. Number three, follow all fire department rules and regulations that are in the memo. And there was 10 of them that were listed as violations, and those would have to be corrected and followed in perpetuity with this unless this changes in the CMRs. Number four, fence around the property. The fence shall be at minimum of six feet in height, but as stated earlier, there will be a, some site impervious screenery that will be applied to the yards between 25-rare and 27. Number five, the hours of operation will be 4:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 6:00 a.m. to noon on Saturdays and Sundays. Number six would be to mitigate the dust on site during windy days. And that would fall under, you know, whatever can be done to suppress it with the water for the dust and use common sense. Number seven, all materials brought onto the site will be inspected and consist of natural wood and brush. No construction waste wood is allowed to be offloaded on the site. Number eight, require the applicant to develop a written operational plan that incorporates industry best practices for the site management to mitigate potential for fire hazards, environmental contamination from airborne particles, or runoff water in nuisance conditions, i.e. dust, odors, and noise. Number nine, and these last four that I'm reciting here is, is out of Sharon Kiernan's recommendation that she sent, and this falls under part of the New York laws that govern mulching operations. And I want to thank Counselor Turco for getting that to Sharon and her giving it to me. Number nine, require the applicant to develop a written emergency plan that addresses measures to be taken in the event of a fire or environmental contamination, including requirements for communication with city officials and the butters. Number 10, require the applicant to develop a written compliant response, complaint response plan, including identification of a 24/7 point of contact for the site. Number 11, require the applicant to pay for the city to conduct a third-party review of the items required above. And those are the conditions. And I think we have addressed our department's concerns. The only issue is, is that I, I believe that we should go by the CMRs and what the fire department says as far as the height of the piles, and that they're controlled in a, in a, in a fashion that reduces any possibility of fire or combustion as mulch processes. So those are the conditions. I got a copy for you, Allison, that you can have. And I just try to stop some of the questions that might be redundant. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gamache. We're going to go over to Counselor Rosengnoll, and then Counselor Gould, and Counselor Welton, then Counselor Manning-Martin, if she still has her hand up. Counselor Rosengnoll.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief. I did have a few questions, but most, most of them have been asked and answered. And I agree with Counselor Gamache. This is buyer beware. This is, you knew where you were building this. We're not, their project, meaning the Weiss project, is not before us. This is whether the JP Raymond site deserves a special permit, and they've been conducting as one for the last 20 years. The fact that their business has actually grown is actually a good thing in my mind. In 2005, when he started, of course, the mulch piles were not going to be that great because he's just starting his business. Over the 20 years that he's been a, as we heard today, a good neighbor and, and helpful to the community, he's grown his business. And that, that should be a good thing. The fact that the Weiss project, who has the exact same permit that the petitioner is looking for, now wants to control that because they've changed their use, that's, that has no, no bearing here. The fact that it was a friendly 40B, or if it wasn't a friendly 40B, the state wants housing. We know that. Whether it's the MBTA law or the brand-new laws that they're throwing down our throat, or, or whether it's the 40B, the state wants housing, they'll put it anywhere. And they don't have the same concerns that we do. Counselor Turco made a great point. Who in their right mind would put housing right next to a mulch pile? The state would. That's who would. We wouldn't because it's not correct. It's not right. But the state, they will put housing anywhere and everywhere. So, but again, that is not up to us. Up to us is whether this company deserves a special permit. In my mind, it's absolutely 100% yes. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Rosengnoll. Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't know how to measure a mulch pile. Can somebody, Attorney Crow, can you tell me how to measure a mulch pile? Captain Dowling, you know how to measure a mulch pile? Is it Pythagorean free theory? Is it the a squared plus b squared equals c squared?
I'm sorry, Counselor.
No, that's okay. I was just, how do you measure a mulch pile?
All right. I think actually someone from J.D. Raymond could answer this better.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
I witnessed it, and I just don't know the name of all their equipment.
Can we have an engineer, Attorney Crow? Can we have an engineer tell us all? Please?
We do have our engineer here. He's dealt with the stormwater. I'm not sure that he can give an answer to that. I'm not.
Well, somebody can, somebody must be able to.
Right. I'm not sure.
Not Mr. Panos.
Well, I can provide some clarity. I don't know why you wouldn't want to hear from him.
I mean, you can.
It's in your community development memo.
You can, it's not actually, but, yeah. I mean, you can tell generally what the height is. I'm not sure that there's a, a way to tell exactly if it's 58, 55. But I think, looking at them from the ground, they can tell they have stackers that go up a certain amount of height on the piles.
Is nobody in your support team that could tell me?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Nobody in your support team could tell me how?
Would you please just give us your name?
Yeah, Mike, Mike Worf. I work with J.D. Raymond Transport. So when we measure our piles, we have a stacker that goes up just shy of 60 feet high with a chute that comes down off of it. So you can't put mulch up above that. And I hung a 100-foot tape measure off of that chute all the way to the ground, up as high as the stacker would go. And we got 59 feet and 11 inches.
Perfect. Thank you. That's, that's all I need.
And it's important to note, after that, those will settle. So we're, I would say the average pile height in that yard is probably about 55 feet.
Great. Thank you. Attorney Crow, can we go back to Captain Dowling? We put poor Captain Dowling on the spot about whether $70,000 was owed. And he said, as far as I know, it has been. Can you tell me whether the delinquent $70,000 bill has been paid?
It has not been paid. At the meeting that I described in 2012, the mayor told John Raymond not to worry about it, that he didn't want J.D. Raymond to pay it. And that goes back a little bit to the fire suppression and J.D. Raymond having the capability and the experience of how to bring out the hot spots and the dispute that took place on the site when the fire was happening of how exactly it should be put out. So as a result of the conversation, John Raymond described the conversation that happened. I, of course, wasn't there. But he described it as the mayor told him not to pay it, that it was a bill that he was going to enforce.
That was interesting. Then why is it still discussed whether $70,000 is owed or not?
Because Attorney Panos brought it up in his package.
Okay. What are the hours of operation, please?
The operation is in the morning. Let me just see where my note went. So they typically operate 5:00 to 6:00, 5:00 a.m., 6:00 p.m. And they do grinding. They do have trucks coming in and out at longer hours than that. And they need the ability at night if they develop a hotspot, if they see a hotspot developing, to go in at night and break apart the pile to make sure the hotspot doesn't get any bigger.
Okay, I can see that. But why are neighbors hearing noise at 4:30, 4 o'clock in the morning, grinding? Mr. Donovan, who was on Zoom, said that he heard grinding occurring at 4:00 a.m. Is that typical?
I don't believe that's typical. We can have, I'm sorry, Mike, can I call you back up here?
Come on back, Mike.
So that is very atypical. We never grind at 4:00, 4:30 in the morning. And I would encourage anybody, if they hear that noise, to ride down there and see if we're there operating. Hey, grinder.
And do we, do we have a customer service?
I'm not sure. We don't have a customer service line, but we have phone numbers on file.
Somebody could stop in and?
They would be able to tell if they went to the entrance of that, whether we were in there.
I'm talking during the day, somebody could go there.
Yeah, yep.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Are you all set, Counselor Gould?
No, I'm not. Thank you.
Okay. Take your time.
I'm trying to read my notes.
Take your time.
I can't read them.
No worries.
No, that's okay. Thank you. I know Mr. Weiss well. Mr. Weiss is a good person who does a lot for the community. I don't know Mr. J.D. Raymond well, but from the sounds of it, he does just as much for the community, if not more. It's a shame that we couldn't mitigate an agreement between the two parties. And I'm not talking a, you know, an agreement to put, put bad feelings aside. It's just, we've got two groups of people that are good people, and it's a shame that we can't work that out, but gives people something to think about. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. I'm gonna jump over to Counselor Welton and then Counselor Peach, as neither of them have spoken, and then give Counselor Manning-Martin a chance one more time. And I believe Attorney Panos might want to speak if there's something that he hasn't said yet. So Counselor Welton.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I'll, I'll keep it brief. I know there's been a lot of fantastic points brought up. I agree. I think Counselor Gould said it well. It's unfortunate we have two strong members of the community that can't figure this out. And I feel like it's on us to be the mediators, and I don't agree that that's our role whatsoever. I think the, the legal descriptions provided by both teams were helpful to an extent, but I think it's probably brought us down even more of a quagmire in terms of figuring out how best to move forward. I, I look at this, you know, the 40B was brought up. Whether we like it or not, that was a friendly 40B. And by virtue of our municipality signing off as such with the state, that's something that we have to acknowledge and accept. So I look at that parcel as being cited for residential development. Now, I know it's within an area that currently doesn't have that. But I also look at this coming forward as the first time that we're looking at a special permit, as looking at this for the first time. Now, I know there's an existing operation there, and by all means, it is not my intent to, to stop the operation. I feel like Counselor Gamache has done a great job, but if we can condition it appropriately, I would like to see it move forward in the right manner with a, with a appropriate special permit. However, we can't dismiss the fact that there's going to be housing there. Mr. Weiss has gone about it the appropriate way. There's a 40B. None of us like 40Bs. We've already discussed that. We're all aware. I think Counselor Manning-Martin brought up a great point. I too am nervous about the SHI, you know, dipping down if, if these come offline. So how do we make this work? Right? This is where I think honestly, the term This is where, I think honestly, the attorneys could have figured this out in mediation and kind of skipped us a lot of hassle tonight. I think if we want the piles to not be 60 feet, this is the time to say it. Make the piles 40 feet, right? If we want to move the piles around, move the piles around. This is our first time at a special permit. Just because they're operating as such now doesn't mean that's how they have to operate under this special permit. So, my consideration would be, again, I think Counselor Gamache, I applaud you, this is a lot to take on, this is a bear to wrap your arms around, that you've done a great job. I think we can condition this appropriately so we can move forward with a successful 40B, you know, project and move forward with a successful business that's been operating, but do it in such a manner where they're brought up to speed in the appropriate way and they have a special permit to reflect that. So, the only additional conditions that I think that I would suggest is location of the fire, excuse me, fire pile. That's exactly what we don't want. The location of the mulch pile. If there's any indication of how far it could be from the proposed 40B project, you know, Counselor Turco brought up the Chelsea Fire example. That's absolutely something that no one even wants to think about. So, can we move the piles around? Is there a size limit for the piles that we should look at? The $70,000, I think, I mean, it's curious to hear that that was the conversation. I don't even know if that's a legally standing conversation. I'd say if that fine was given for $70,000, that money should be received by the city. The other piece is if we put fire suppression system there. We were talking about water rights earlier tonight. Are we going to meter that? I mean, that's not something that we're going to have there, you know, just for, you know, for their benefit on the taxpayers' dime. So, I think this can be conditioned. I think everybody can leave here disappointed, and I think that means we've done something well, where everybody wins to a certain extent. But this is really messy, and Counselor Gamache, I think you've done a really good job. I think if there's a few other conditions we can put on there, you know, that would be helpful, and I would be happy to support it if we can get to a point. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Welton. Counselor Peach.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate everyone who's showed up tonight to discuss the communication the council received. Brought me back to studying for my master's degree. But nonetheless, the information is there, and it's important. I have heard a lot about the individuals that own property or own businesses here. I have not had the pleasure of meeting, I don't think, any of you, but I appreciate what you do for your community. I don't consider those things when the council considers special permits. What I do consider is the jobs that are provided to the people in the area. It's been spoken, there are people who drive trucks for J.D. Raymond that are PBD residents. I wouldn't want to see those jobs go away. I grew up in South PBD. I probably smell the mulch, but just, you know, I spent there my whole life, so didn't notice it. Now, I live over here, and I smell the dairy farm, so, you know, pig farms, dairy farms, different side of PBD. But, you know, in Ward 3, we have a lot of areas that we term the Wild West. I think this is one of those in Ward 5, where businesses operated for a long period of time, and whether they were there legally or not there legally, the city never took any action on it, and we're talking 20-plus years ago. And this council has seen some of those issues come up in the past, and it really just depends on who your building commissioner is at the time when the complaint is filed and whether action is taken. I don't think we should be punishing a business that's been in operation for 20 years because now the city approved a 40B. I'll say the ZBA approved it, not the council. Whether the business was there legally or not legally, it was never addressed prior to the 40B being issued. So, we issued a comprehensive permit, the City of PBD, for housing next to a business that we knew existed. I think what we're trying to do right here is just put the paperwork in order, provide a permit that the court has told us is required. Prior to that, I would assume our building commissioners thought this was a pre-existing non-conforming use because of the length of period of time it's been there and the amount of time zoning has changed in the area. I am going to support this. I think Counselor Gamache's conditions are fair. I think it provides safety for our firefighters. I think it provides a level of safety for the people that are, that could potentially live there. As far as living next to mulch piles, I mean, it's not a desirable location, I don't think by any means, but is it a legal location? Yeah, we permitted it. So, the state wants housing, the state's getting housing, maybe. And to clarify, I know Counselor Gamache said the units that are coming back on, there was one missed, which is the biggest one in Ward 3. So, there's actually 321 units that'll be added to our SHI based on the governor's order. So, where we were over 11%, like, we are still over 11%. It's just the sheet that was issued at the beginning of the year was prior to the governor's order. So, if we're worried about potentially losing 116 units, we will still remain over the 10%. I'm not saying I want to lose them. I'm just saying, if that's your worry, you can put that to bed for now. I will be supporting this with the conditions Counselor Gamache suggested. It's an opportunity for us to clean up some of the things that needs to be cleaned up at J.D. Raymond. It does consider that there could potentially be residential there, but where there is no existing residential, to condition a permit as if people are living next door today, I think, is a little egregious of this council to do, especially for a business that's been operating for 20-plus years. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peach. Counselor McGinn, and then Counselor Melville.
Thank you, Madam President. I threw to Counselor Gamache, and Counselor Gamache, thank you for reviewing your proposed conditions. It's very helpful. There's only one that I wanted to double-check with you on. I thought I heard you say the hours of operation, 4:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., which, and that is different from what I saw on the application. They had 4:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. weekdays and Saturdays from 6:00 a.m. to noon. Are you intending to expand beyond what's on the application?
Through the chair to you. That was me not being able to look at my writing. It was a six, not an eight. So, I'm sure I would have gone over it before, when I reread it, I was kind of in a hurry.
Great.
So, it's actually 4:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 6:00 a.m. to noon on Saturdays and Sundays, if they desire to use it. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification, and I struggle with reading my own writing all the time, so totally understand. Madam President, I've heard all the debate here tonight, and we had volumes of information dropped on us here from both the applicant and the opposition, and again, I think Counselor Gamache has done a nice job kind of getting to the heart of the issue here. You know, I do plan to support it, properly condition. I'm sensitive to the suggestion made by Counselor Welton. I'm not sure if there's an additional condition or two to be had there, but if so, you know, this is the time to bring that forward. And thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Counselor Melville.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be quick. Just to summarize, I'll be supporting it this evening. Couple of points that I just, you know, sometimes when you get these late debates, you can kind of, you know, try to split the baby. Ultimately, we had a number of department heads. We had the mayor walk by here. If they were owed $70,000, we'd know about it, okay? So, that means nothing to me. Second part of it is, when I hear about, we had a neighbor that lives a mile away that said that they smell, or we're talking about a number of different things. The gentleman over there live within throwing distance of it, they're enthusiastically supporting it. So, the neighbors that live around the area are completely in support of this and have made that clear. So, and with regards to conditioning it, because we're going to put a 40, a friendly 40B that I didn't approve, nobody here did, as we've talked about, is going next door, I think it's a bad precedent to set. So, you got a building project that's going to subvert zoning, that you're now going to force on other businesses or special permit holders within an area, and now we're going to condition them based on that particular housing project that doesn't follow, is conform with the zoning to begin with, doesn't make any sense. So, I think it's unfair business practice. I wouldn't do that, and I won't support it. I think Counselor Gamache did an outstanding job putting the conditions together. You know, it's not our job to be the mediators of this issue, so I'm not. I'm not going to try to mediate it. The conditions will be in place, I'll support those, and I think I'm ready for the council to move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Melville. Counselor Manning-Martin, your hand is not raised anymore. Maybe your question was answered. We'll give you a minute to come back in. In the meantime, Attorney Panos, if there's something that has not been discussed, if you want to address it briefly, please join us, and then Manning-Martin will follow up.
Pardon me, and I don't want to step on Counselor Manning-Martin's comments, although I do think she hit the nail on the head when she said, "A legal operation, if we just allow it to continue," what message are we sending? Passage to time, all things will be forgiven. With regard to the $70,000, that came out of a public records request to the fire department, and that public records request indicates, and I provided you with, the result of that request indicates that that's still on the books, it's still out there. So, whether there was a side conversation with the mayor or this or that person, it's still on the books with the fire department. The hours of operation, starting at 4:30 a.m., we do take issue with. 4:30 is early. What business in the city do we know begins at 4:30 but for maybe a bakery, especially one that can grind mulch at 91 decibels plus? So, I would ask you to rethink that and perhaps push that back to maybe 6:00 or 7:00, I think would be more appropriate. The other thing that I really do want to reemphasize is you have a dimensional requirement violation, potential violation, and we do not know, because we have not been provided a plan with appropriate setbacks, whether or not they need a variance. This council cannot grant a dimensional relief, right? Your special permit granting authority. So, the operation, if it does encroach in the dimensional setbacks, may be in violation of the zoning ordinance anyway, and I would ask that a condition be placed in that regard. And I will close with this, and I think anyone who's been to the site, and, you know, I commend Counselor Welton, by the way, for his comments, because among all of you, he was on the conservation commission way back when. He's pretty familiar with the back and forth, not only with the 40B, but the wetlands mitigation. He's very familiar with that property, and I really do appreciate his input on that, having that basis of knowledge. But I can tell you that if you go to the site today, there is no wind mitigation. There is no, by John Raymond's own admission, there is no odor mitigation. They do nothing to contain what's going on on the site as we sit here today. And I'm not sure your conditions go far enough to control that. You are going to have an apartment building going next door that is the prevailing use at 27R Farm Avenue, because we have the comprehensive permit to do so today, whether it exists or not. In any event, I'll close, it's late. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Panos. I am gonna refer to Counselor Higgins, who has not spoken yet, and then Mr. Wood, we might have a minute for you after that. Go ahead, Counselor Higgins.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to comment on the fact that, you know, I'm familiar with companies operating in a ward that were considered operating under conditions described as the Wild West, and that was brought under control with a special permit that was granted in 2002. It had a lot of conditions on it. And so, here we are tonight, talking about an existing business, and I've heard Counselor Peach refer to, like, Wild West and Ward 3. This, I think what Counselor Gamache has put together is going to wrangle that in. I do, I think he's put together a good list of conditions. I do have concerns about the operating hours being that early, but, and I also would like to mention that even though the state regulations may allow you to go to 60 feet, there's nothing stopping us from creating a condition of something less than that. We have that happening with the special permit associated in Ward 6. So, having said all that, though, I'm in support of this permit with the added conditions that Counselor Gamache has put forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Higgins. Mr. Wood, if you'd like.
With that lawyer, I get up at 4 o'clock every morning. I open my garage at 4:30. I go buy Bagel World. They're open at 5 o'clock. They're in cooking bagels, so they can open at 5:00. People should get up in the morning and see what's going on, because other people do get up and go to work early. And I don't leave my garage some nights until 12 o'clock, when I can get a truck out on the road the next day. I give a guy a job and tell him, "I can't work here tomorrow because your truck is broke." And I've done that for 35 years at that garage, and that's how long I've been in PBD, 75 years. So, people should get up and look around, instead of saying, "No business opens at 4:00 in the morning."
John Turk is on his way to work.
He doesn't go to Bagel World. Thank you, sir. Counselor Gamache, should I go to you, or should I go back to Counselor Manning-Martin one more time? I'm going to defer.
I just wanted to bring up a point, if I may, to Counselor Welton. There was a site plan that was submitted by the petitioner, and it shows the number of piles, and it also shows the majority of the Weiss's property line has an infiltration system where there cannot be any mulch piles close to that side yard. And it is in the package. I know that the package was huge, so you might have overlooked it, but there is a plan that was submitted, and if there is any type of variance that's needed, then they'll address it. But right now, they think that they have got the required setbacks of whatever's necessary. But if you look at the plan, I want to say 80%, maybe 90% of the side yard is that infiltration system where they cannot put a mulch pile right on top of their property line. And as Mr. Panis suggested or stated, you know, it's got to be within 100 feet. Well, that'll be addressed, because they can't do it unless they want to get a variance. So, I'll leave it at that. It was submitted. The package is huge, but the stormwater retention area is right up against the property line.
Thank you, Counselor Gamache. Counselor Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate you coming back around to me. I'll move on. I'm just surprised at some of the remarks tonight by my colleagues, such as, "It depends on your building inspector and buyer beware." I don't think that those comments from the legislative body for the city really instills much confidence in us, but, thank you. I obviously won't be supporting this, but I appreciate everybody's time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Manning-Martin. We're going to wrap this up. I do have Counselor McGinn that would like to speak. If there's something that hasn't been said, I'll open it up to you after Counselor McGinn for one minute. Thank you. Counselor McGinn.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Can we get Attorney Panis to...
Can we get Attorney Panis to? I just want to probe your assertion about the dimensional regulations.
Yes.
You're saying there's potentially lack of compliance with 7.2, is that of the ordinance?
That's correct.
All right. So I'm looking at 7.2 right now.
It's in a footnote.
It's in a footnote. I see a footnote for as-of-right uses, but for special permit uses, I don't see any call-out whatsoever.
Okay. So it's in the table of dimensional uses? Hold on, let me find it. And you have to look at the DDD district?
I'm looking at the DDD. I see a footnote H.
Yep.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yep.
But I only see that relative to the as-of-right uses. And it's your belief that that also applies to the special permit uses? Is that your?
That's correct.
That's your belief?
That's correct. And then it relates back to 7.2?
I just want to understand what you're alleging.
Yes, that's exactly what I'm suggesting.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Mr. Weiss, if you want to say anything that hasn't been mentioned.
I just want to clarify with Mr. Counselor Gamache that the property abuts goes all the way along the back before, just instead of one area, it goes all the way back. Not to, no problem. And another thing is, the 4:30 in the morning start for operation, that's fine, but a large grinding right against the building, maybe is there a way that we can work together where they can just, if they want to start that early, move it on another side of the property, just so it doesn't affect the future people? That's all. And if there's a way that they can control some of the dust blowing onto the property would be greatly appreciated, so that we all can try to, you know, get through this. If the dust blowing over, maybe there's a way that they can stop or slow down or go to a different part of the property. That's all. I'm just trying to be reasonable. Thank you.
Counselor Gamache.
Yes, in respect to Mr. Weiss's comment, could I have somebody from J.D. Raymond come up and address a question that I have? Yeah, he's a good kid. Is there a way to, if, I know a lot of it's going to be loading the vehicles early in the morning to get them out. But in fairness to Mr. Weiss's comment, is there an area that, for the first couple of hours that you can work that's away from their property for a couple of hours and then go to that area?
Yeah, so 99% of the reason that we operate, like, early morning or later in the evening is loading trucks and shipping. And that helps us get deliveries into Boston and different areas that are congested. With the grinders, right now, my operator that grinds punches in at 5:00 a.m. He's got maintenance and a few things that he does that are quiet. And he maybe starts those by 5:30, 6:00 o'clock in the morning. And if we needed to push that a little bit when we're in that area, back to a 7:00 a.m. start, say, when we're in certain areas of the yard, that is something that we could probably accommodate.
If I may, what I'm trying to get at is, is there a possibility of limiting the use of the grinder until 7:00 a.m.?
I wouldn't love to do that all the way across the board, but if we looked at certain areas in the yard that are most impactful to that property, then...
Well, this, in my opinion, this is going to be, naturally, it's going to be litigated. But in fairness to Mr. Weiss, he brought up the comment that, you know, could we maybe not do the grinding until 7:00 a.m.? And I mean, I think it's, as a counselor, I really, if you can, what's the earliest hour that you can push that?
No, right now, we try to get as much in in a day as we can, right? So we pretty much go from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. with a grinder, or 5:00 p.m. with a grinder. If we had to push that to a 7:00 a.m. start, I would think...
Well, let me ask you this. If we were to push that grinding operation to maybe 7:00 a.m. and allow you to stay open another hour later on the other side?
Yeah, could we get like 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. with the grinders?
Yeah. I mean, I think that you don't want them grinding at 4:30 in the morning.
No, no, no. I'm just trying to be thankful for the people that are going to...
Yeah.
So maybe we get another two weeks to work it out, and maybe that, you know, maybe they can start earlier. We're open to it. Maybe they just work on the other side of the pile. If it works, let them, all the power to them. As long as it's over there and it's not coming over here, why should they be, why should we put a hold on it?
What I'm going to do is, I'm going to condition it, I'm going to condition the permit to 7:00 a.m. grinding, but extend your hours later in the day. And if you can work something out, you can come back and amend the special permit.
Yeah, no, as long as that restriction only applies to the grinding operation, we can function with it.
Only grinding, yes.
And can we do something about the dust blowing on in the one area?
That's going to be, that's part of the conditions of the special permit.
They have to control the dust.
Yes, yeah. We've got that as part of the conditions. So I'm going to...
And it just, and if there is an issue, how do, who resolves it?
The Health Department.
If there is an issue, who?
The Health Department. It's under their purview. So you contact the Health Department if there's a violation or a nuisance or something like that, and they will come out and investigate it, just as they have been doing whenever a complaint comes up. Okay? So I'm going to limit it to 7:00 a.m. Can't do grinding until 7:00 a.m., but I will extend your hours of operation to 7:00 p.m. Okay? So the hours of operation are going to be 4:30 to 7:00 p.m., but the grinding operation cannot start prior to 7:00 a.m.
Does the 4:30 a.m. apply to trucking? Is that...
Yeah, I mean, it's just the grinding. That's what's making most of the noise.
Yeah, yeah. Is there, do we have to put a time limit on the trucking side of that?
No.
I mean, there's trucks running all through PB 24 hours a day, so...
No. Is there a...
I'm totally okay with conditioning the grinding if we have to, but I feel as though the trucking is something that...
Okay, well, you're just an employee. She's...
Yeah, let her talk.
No, that was just what I had mentioned earlier about the trucking and then controlling the hotspots, just making sure that they have the ability to continue.
Yes, but this is just for grinding. Absolutely no grinding prior to 7:00 a.m. And I think that would suffice the Mr. Weiss's concern, that, you know, 4:30 is a little early to be grinding. We'll go 7:00 to 7:00 for grinding.
Can I just ask a point of clarification? Are we still talking about grinding at a certain portion of the property, or is that just being addressed by the timeframe?
That's being addressed by the timeframe.
Got it.
And if, I don't see this happening, but if the two of you can get together and come up with a reasonable solution to put the grinding someplace else, that's between the two of yous. My concern is the grinding operation doesn't stop before 7:00 a.m. And, you know, I would love to see the two of you work it out. I mean, I really do. And that's my hope. And I think part of these conditions are giving you the ability to start making a framework of what can be done. And I think this is addressed as your concerns and their concerns. And I think that the 7:00 a.m. addresses Mr. Weiss's concern. So, I mean, I think what we're doing is building a little bit of rapport between the two of yous. I can only hope that, you know, you can meet and come up with some types of things, and it doesn't have to be applied in the special permit. It can be agreed between the two parties. But that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to make it a 7:00 a.m. start for grinding, and the hours of operation will extend to 7:00 p.m. And you don't have to stay there that long, but it gives you the ability to take one extra hour. Is that all right with the council?
Do any other counselors have any comments? Counselor Welton.
I just have a quick comment. And Counselor Gamache, I think you answered most of the questions that I had. Two things. I would not like to drop the $70,000. I feel like it's owed to the city, but if that's not the will of the council, that's fine. I think if there's an opportunity to meter the water lines that are feeding those fire hydrants, I think that's something that we should include. And second, you know, the 7.2 of our zoning ordinance, compliance with that, it seems like that would be something we'd want to include. But that's it for the conditions. I know it's getting late. I really appreciate all the hard work you've put into this. And it seems like neither parties are fully happy, so I think we're doing something right. So, thank you.
On the aspect...
Thank you, Counselor Welton. I'm just going to wrap up. My only comment is, thank you for all this work, and you've done a lot, and you've mediated. So I appreciate that, and I'm leaning to support this because of all the work that you've done, and I think you've come to a fair agreement. And now I'm going to turn it over to you, Counselor Gamache.
Yeah, just one quick thing, and I'm getting old. I forgot the question you asked, the first one about the meter. I'll put that in there, that all water utilized on the property is metered. What was the other one?
Excuse me, that it's in compliance with the 7.2. Oh, the $70,000. The $70,000, it seems like, I can see, we don't have to post that anyway.
I can give a little bit of background on this?
That's okay. I mean, I think we've gone over it. I can see that. Nobody wants to do it, so we're good. I think if we meter it, there's an opportunity to get some revenue. So I take that off. The other piece was the compliance with the 7.2 zoning ordinance. That's all.
Motion to close the public hearing.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Roll call, vote? Counselors Turco?
Yes.
Peach?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Gamache?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Daigle?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0. Counselor Gamache.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. At this time, I would move approval on the application from J.D. Raymond Transport, Inc., P.O. Box 48, Dover Fox Croft, Maine, for a special permit to allow the use of a mulching, composting operation and/or outdoor storage of pre-existing non-conforming use, but that's for litigation purposes. At 25 Farm Ave., PB Mass., filed in accordance with Sections 1.6, 4.2.2, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PB zoning ordinance with the following conditions. Excuse me. Keep all entrance/exit areas clean and free of debris. Number two, place a second fire hydrant on site. This hydrant will be located where the PFD says would be most effective, but is not limited to one additional fire hydrant. It's whatever the PFD mandates that should be. Follow all, number three, follow all fire department rules and regulations that are in the memo from the fire department. Number four, fence around the property. Fence shall be at a minimum of six feet in height, and place an impermeable greenery on the property line closest to 25 Farm Ave. Hours of operation shall be 4:30 to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to noon on Sundays, with a caveat that grinding can only take place between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Saturday and Sunday, yes. Do you grind on the weekend? Where are you? Do you grind on the weekend?
Mike.
I grind sometimes on Saturdays. Very well. Mike.
Okay, grinding on a Sunday would be, I mean, on a Saturday would be 7:00 a.m.
Yeah, Saturday.
Okay. Well, you're only open six to noons. All right. Grinding operations 7:00 a.m. on Saturdays and Sundays. Number six, mitigate dust on site during windy days. Number seven, all materials brought onto site will be inspected and consist of natural wood and brush. No construction waste. Wood is allowed to be offloaded on the site. Number seven, I'm sorry, number eight, require the applicant to develop a written operational plan that incorporates industry best practices for site management to mitigate potential for fire hazards, environmental contamination from airborne particulate or runoff water and nuisance conditions such as dust, odors, and noise. Number nine, require the applicant to develop a written emergency plan that addresses measures to be taken in the event of a fire or environmental contamination, including requirements for communication with the city officials and abutters. Number 10, require the applicant to develop a written complaint response plan, including identification of a 24/7 point of contact on the site. Number 11, require the applicant to pay for the city to conduct a third-party review of these items required above. And number 12, all water pertaining to the site will be metered. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any further discussion? Counselor Welton.
Sorry, I just, the last request, Counselor Gamache, was the compliance with the zoning ordinance 7.2.
I'm sorry, what?
Counselor McGinn, can you help me out with that?
Sure, Madam President. Yeah, I think the request by Counselor Welton was a condition that there be compliance, for the avoidance of doubt, that there be compliance with the provisions of 7.2 of the zoning ordinance. And while I have the floor, Madam President, on the motion, just because I heard Sunday a few times there, but I don't think you meant Sunday. There are no Sunday hours requested on the...
Okay, yeah. Strike Sunday, yep.
It's just those were Saturday hours.
Saturday operations.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Gamache.
Thank you, Counselor. So I did say Sundays, and I want to delete that, so it's only going to be on Saturdays. No operation on Sundays unless there is a hotspot. And that would be under fire control.
You heard the motion. Any more discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote. Counselors Turco?
Yes.
Peach?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Gamache?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
No.
Welton?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Daigle?
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 1. Thank you. Counselor Rozignol.
Thank you, Madam President. Motion to go past 11. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Yes.
Peach?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Gamache?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Daigle?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0. Thank you. I'm not going to let everyone recess. Let's just, let's move to the reports of committees. Legal Affairs, Counselor Rozignol.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a Legal Affairs Subcommittee meeting earlier this evening. In attendance for the meeting was Counselor Higgins, Counselor Gamache sitting in for Counselor Melville, Counselor Peach, Counselor Turco. Other counselors present were Counselor Gould, Manning Martin, McGinn, and Melville came in late. We had one item on the agenda, and that was snow removal. We had two motions come out of that Subcommittee. First motion was to receive item 8C. I now bring that before the City Council. So moved.
You heard the motion to receive 8C. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Our counselor is not remote anymore, so we don't need to roll call everything. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Rozignol.
Thank you, Madam President. The second motion was to have Captain Richards meet with and review other cities and towns and review how other cities and towns monitor and enforce their snow removal ordinance and report back to Legal Affairs. That passed unanimously as well. I now bring that to the council as a whole.
You heard the motion, I hope. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Counselor Rozignol.
Thank you, Madam President. That, um, agenda item will stay in Subcommittee, waiting for Captain Richards to get back to us. That is reported Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rozignol. A Finance Committee report. Counselor McGinn, please.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee met earlier this evening. Present for the committee were Counselors Gamache, Gould, Manny Martin, Turco, and myself as Chair. All other counselors were present. We had two items on the agenda. The first item was authorization to sign a purchase and sale agreement and bond, authorize a bond order for multiple Rusolo properties. This was presented to us by His Honor the Mayor. As Chair, I invited, uh, public comment on this, both those present at the meeting and on Zoom, and there was none offered. The, uh, we did have a, an item from the regular meeting package, item 7B, that was received in Committee unanimously, and I now would move to receive item 7B. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Madam President. So, um, the mayor laid out, actually first played a, a video that has been on the website and PBD TV, where he has kind of laid out his rationale for why he thinks this is an important acquis, land acquisition for the city of PBD. He also had available this evening Mr. Bell Vance, Director of Community Development, Mr. Khan, the city solicitor, Mr. Jengris, Director of Finance, and Mr. Paulitz, the Director DPS, to support his presentation. In summary, he laid out three primary reasons for wanting to make this acquisition. One is the water permits that are in existence today for this Rusolo property, and that it's at a level of 3.34 million gallons per day permitted currently, and that it's coming from a water basin that is not stressed. He indicated that in the typical winter-type demand, the city has 5.1 million gallons per day requirement, and that spikes up to 11, approximately 11 million gallons per day in the summer, and that the inability of the two current process water treatment plants, Walsh and Winona, are unable to meet that 11 million gallons per day, which is what causes us to have to draw on the MWRA. And the primary objective here would be to, in the long term, be able to reduce reliance on the expensive MWRA water and have better control over our rates over the long haul. There will be future infrastructure needs necessary to make the water be usable for consumption, and those aren't considered in this particular effort. This is strictly the land acquisition. He, his second major point was that the acquisition of this land will assist with flood mitigation and give the city better control over what has historically been an area that has been difficult to manage flow through while it's been in private ownership. And lastly, it again adds to open space and the amenities that PBD residents appreciate. Also included in the package was a report from Weston and Sampson, which provided an indication that the water quality, based on the initial testing, is good. It also provided a present value analysis indicating that, over the long term, it would be financially beneficial for the city to go this route versus long-term reliance on the MWRA. The mayor reiterated that providing an authorization to him to enter into a PNS would ultimately just commence a due diligence period. There would be more testing done before the city would close on the property, and that there will be language in the purchase and sale that would allow the city to walk away from a deal if it was found to have unanticipated problems that were uncovered during the due diligence period. The mayor gave us a supplemental late add, which was a modified Page 6 to the P, to the draft PNS agreement. That was accepted by a vote of 5 to 0. I would bring that now for consideration of the full council. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Madam President. Multiple counselors, both on the Finance Committee and other members present, spoke on this. Generally, all were extremely supportive of the acquisition, stressing that it is in, very much long-term beneficial to future generations of, of PBD residents. With that, and after other questions were answered by the mayor, there was a motion made by Counselor Gould as follows. Move to authorize the mayor to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with Rusolo PBD Incorporated for approximately 164.58 acres of land. A draft of such purchase and sale agreement is attached to a communication from His Honor the Mayor dated January 17, 2025, and as modified by a January 23, 2025 late communication from His Honor the Mayor of Page 6 of such purchase and sale agreement. Madam President, that passed the Finance Committee unanimously, and I now bring that authorization motion to the full council for consideration. So moved.
You heard the motion authorization. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. The second portion of the, uh, second task that the council, or that the committee needed to address relative to this land acquisition was to authorize a bond order, and that motion was made by Counselor Gould as follows. PBD City Council, City of PBD Massachusetts, bond order for Rusolo land acquisition and water rights be it ordered by the City Council, the City of PBD, that $25 million is appropriated to pay the cost of purchasing various properties consisting of 164.56 acres in total, more or less, or more precisely described as follows. Zero Cedar Pond at Route 128, map 89 lot 007. Map 89 lot 008. Zero Jubilee Drive, map 89 lot 009. Zero Linfield Street R, map 99 lot 0102. Map 99 lot 011C. Zero Allen's Lane, map 83 lot 007. Map 94 lot 190. Map 94 lot 003. Zero Washington, Washington Street, map 94 lot 001. Including the payment of any costs incidental or related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1 of the General Laws, or any other enabling authority that the treasurer, mayor, or any other city official is authorized to take actions necessary or convenient to carry out the purposes of this order, and that this order be adopted as advertised and read. It is further ordered that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the appropriate officials of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Commonwealth to qualify under Chapter 44A of the General Laws. Any and all bonds of the city authorized to borrow pursuant to this loan order and to provide such information and execute such documents as such officials of the Commonwealth may require in connection therewith. Madam President, that bond order authorization motion to advertise was approved by the committee unanimously, and I now bring it for consideration of the full council. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. You heard the motion. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. The second item on the agenda was a transfer of funds, South and West School roofs in an amount of $75,000. That was presented to us by His Honor the Mayor. Explain that this was money that was needed for feasibility to study, to determine the needs and costs of potential repair and/or replacement of the roofs at the South and West Elementary Schools. With that, this is part of the MSBA Accelerated Repair Grant Program that these two schools are participating in. With that explanation, there was a motion made by Counselor Gould as follows. Move to approve a transfer from bond premiums reserved for projects, account number 270000033015, in an amount of $75,000 to South and West School roofs, count number 3000000358862025, in an amount of $75,000. Madam President, that motion passed the Finance Committee unanimously, and I'll bring it for consideration of the full council. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. That completes the reporter Committee.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Turco.
Madam President, if there's no objection from my fellow counselors, I'd just like to defer to Counselor Gould, if that's okay with everybody. Seeing.
No objection. Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counselor Turco. I actually decided to stay on after that captivating special permit hearing, so this goes to waste. No, I just want to let everyone know, I'm very excited to announce that I will not be running for reelection to the PBD City Council in November. I've been blessed with a loving family and many great friends, and I will continue to try to make life better for those less fortunate than I. It's been a lot of fun, and for that, I am very grateful. Thank you very much for your opportunity to serve you. Short and sweet.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. We purposely did that in case anyone wants to say any brief words about you at this late hour. I'm going to jump back to you, but first, we're going to start with Counselor Turco again.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Gould, I will say that I am a cynic, and when I first met you 10 years ago, and I heard all these good things about you, I said, "It's impossible. Nobody could be as good as they say." And over the last decade, I have run into countless people from cities far and wide, and every time your name came, comes up, and there's another nice thing to be said about what you've done or what you continue to do for this city. And you're the real deal. You're, you're one that I'm very proud that I served with, and I thank you for everything that you've done. And, you know, this is, we have another year with you, so I'm not saying goodbye tonight. We have, fortunately, another 10 months.
Thank you, Counselor Turco, very much.
If you'd like me to move on with the motions, orders, and resolutions, or would you like to give the?
Sure, let's, yeah, we'll do, we'll work some motions in there, too.
Very good. With that, Madam President, move to, under suspension of the rules, move to receive and approve item 9B, Entertainment License Renewals for 2025, Club Luiste, Camos, 10 Collins Street, Red's Kitchen and Tavern, 131 Newbury Street, Su Chang's, 373 Lowell Street. Also under item 9C, general licenses renewals for 2025 taxi license, non-city, which-city taxi, 92 Jackson Street, Salem, Mass. So moved.
You heard the motion. Subject to all papers being in order. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Turco.
We have no further motions.
Thank you. Counselor Peach.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion this evening to draft and advertise an amendment to Section 19-81, which is the handicap parking ordinance, to add a handicap spot in front of and along the property of 29 Union Street. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Peach.
Thank you, Madam President. I promised Counselor Gould I'd be brief, and I'll save all of my, or most of my comments for our last meeting this year. But I will say, Counselor Gould, you have done a great service to the city of PBD and beyond, especially those in Ward 3, and I'm happy I get to sit next to you for the, the next year, so, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Steph.
No further motions.
Thank you, Counselor Peach. Counselor Gould.
No motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. Counselor Gamache, please.
Yes, at this time, I move appro, uh, I move, under suspension of the rules, to go to item 8B, and that's a correspondence from Mary Martin, City Auditor, or billboard information, and receive this as informational. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Gamache.
Uh, under presentation, petitions, memorials, and remonstrances, 9A, Class 2 Motor Vehicle License Transfer, Detour Cars L.C., Doing Businesses Auto Factory, 288 Newbury Street. Move approval, all papers being in order.
With a public hearing, Counselor Gamache?
Pardon?
And set up a public hearing as well?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, set up a public hearing.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
Yes, I too would like to, um, tell Counselor Gould that it's been an honor to serve with you. I can remember when we were doing the PBD Idol, and I said to you, "Tom, you're a popular guy. You should be running for counselor." And then you went and did it. And, uh, I don't know, you can, no, I'm not taking credit. Believe me, I'm not taking credit. He probably hates me for putting it in his head, but, um, no, you, it's been, it's been very good serving with you, and had a lot of good times, and I look forward for the next year. We can give you a lot of crap over the next year, so be ready.
Thank you, Dave, very much.
Thank you, and I have no further motions.
Thank you, Counselor Gamache. Counselor Higgins.
Thank you, Madam President. I would also like to, I'm stunned and surprised by the news tonight. I did not know this was coming. I thoroughly appreciate working with Counselor Gould. He's one of the most welcoming people I know and very charitable. He's had great advice, and I'm certainly going to try to, you know, worship and enjoy the, the, the year to come. I'd like to thank him for his service. Other than that, I have no motions or resolutions for tonight.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Counselor Higgins. Counselor Welton.
Thank you, Madam President. No motions this evening. Tom, congratulations on an amazing career as a city counselor. I know you're going to continue to stay busy in the community. Like Counselor Turco said, you were one of the first people I met when I moved to PBD, and I said, "There's no way this guy's real. This is, uh, Andy sells ice cream, too. What's going on with this guy, right?" Or gives it away, for the most part. I don't even know if you make any money off of that ice cream situation. But thank you so much for everything you do for the community, and that you continue to do for the community, particularly what you do for people with disabilities in the community, and the most marginalized amongst our community members. So you're a really good man, and a great example for, for so many of us, and, and thank you for, for all you do. And a huge thank you to Sharon and your children as well, for, for being such awesome people, and allowing us to, sharing you with, with us and with everybody in PBD. So thank you.
Thank you, Craig, very much.
Counselor McGinn, if you're all set. Counselor Welton. Counselor McGinn.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 7A and refer to finance. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8A. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Gould, I, it's just been great serving with you all these years. I'll have a lot more to say down the line. As Counselor Peach said, we've got a whole other year here, and I look forward to serving with you for that remaining year. But I can't resist here, Counselor Gamache was commenting about how he said, "Oh, you're a popular guy." I always kid with Counselor Gould when I march with him in the Memorial Day Parade, that I think, I can only come up with maybe five people that don't know him in, in the city. He is the most popular guy in the city, I believe. But you have done so much good in your time here on the council, and really, truly representing those people that sent you here. and really, truly representing those people that sent you here, always a voice of reason. And again, it's been, it's been great serving with you, and look forward to this, to this last year together.
Thank you, Pete, very much.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Counselor Rozignol.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no motions this evening. But Tom, you are a fantastic Counselor, fantastic community leader, and even a better person. It's been an honor to serve with you, and I'll be saying more accolades as the year winds down. But thank you for your service, and I look forward to this last year on the council, but I know you're not going far.
Thank you, Tom. My knee is finally feeling better. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Rozignol. Counselor Melville.
Thank you, Madam President. I think, you know, I think we got everything except for the appointments. So I'll just make a motion to approve the various appointments of item 7C, under suspension of the rules made by the Mayor. So moved.
You heard the motion to approve the appointments in 7C. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0.
I think that's it. We got it, right?
Counselor Gould, you know, I've known you since I was like 10 or 12. You're the best. You know, I love you. You know, I think what, other than your successful business, your public service, all the time you donate, I think what really makes you incredible is that crew of guys you hang around with and take all over the place, and been to various baseball parks all over the country. And I can tell you by knowing some of those people, sainthood's have been earned with less. But you're really the best, and I'm so glad we'll get another year to go, and we'll do a nice Irish goodbye and rolling stories all the way out.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Counselor Melville. Counselor Gould, what I will say briefly, you've been in office since 2011. I was trying to remember when I first met you, and I thought it was when we were on the PDAT Committee, and we had a secret handshake. But I actually met you when I was at Merrimack. You donated slush to me. I was an RA. And then, and then we got to know each other later on. So you're, um...
By the way, everyone blew my cover. Sharon is home pissed off that I gave ice cream out.
I might have paid, actually, for the slush. Merrimack paid, I believe. So you've been a great businessperson, a great colleague, friend, everything else, and that's why I'm going to plug you for deserving to be honored at the Northeast Ark Gala in April. So Sharon, I'm sure, will be there, and anyone else that wants to join. I think Counselor Welton will be there. I'll be there. So it'll be a great night and very well-deserved award.
Thank you very much, Julie.
That's it for now. Motion to adjourn.
Allison, hold on. Allison and Stacy, thank you for everything. Appreciate it.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.